...election and licensing commissioners for the town of North Andover, Monday, June 6, 2016. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll begin with the approval of minutes.
I'm sure our motion that we approve the minutes has written for May 23, 2016.
All those in favor? Aye. Moving on to communication and announcements.
Madam Chairman, it's an exciting night. We have four new employees here. It's always great when we get to invite new employees to meet the board and meet the public. We also have Director Cefory in the back, standing in the corner with the man with the shades. We can sit with the man with the shades out back. It's great. It's all right.
I read glasses.
Every building inspector should have sunglasses.
Yeah.
So, Don Belanger is with Eric Cefory in the back, and is our new inspector of buildings. Very excited to have Don on. Don has, you know, 25 years-plus experience, has worked for us in filling in for gary uncertain vacation periods, which is great, so he understands the community, has local community ties, which is also fantastic. So, we're very excited. Don's first day was today. I didn't bug you today, I looked in, but I left you alone.
Well, I'd like to tell you that the folks in the office were wonderful. They went out of their way to make me feel comfortable. And that itself was a blessing for a first day, it was very good.
That's great.
Great.
My family's been here around since the mid-'70s, so it's also, I consider, a pleasure and a privilege to be here in the city.
I actually had a Belanger call me today and ask what channel we were on this evening.
I mean, I think I have a little one.
She told him ESPN.
So, thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to it as well.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Next up, we'll, we have two folks joining us in the water treatment plant or the water treatment area. Bruce was unable to make it tonight, but I want to introduce both Gilbert Winter, over here in the corner, and Tiffany Blake, in the front. We've had an opportunity to hire two very qualified folks, as the board knows, and maybe the public does or doesn't know. It can be a little bit of a difficult, those slots can be difficult to fill. We've got two very experienced people. Gilbert has an extensive amount of experience. Tiffany certainly is working her way through that and is completing a master's program at Tufts, and she'll be completing that over the summer and working beginning full-time in the fall. And Gilbert's going to allow us to have, really, a great team within the department, something that's important. We don't often talk about the water treatment plant, but the bottom line is that's where all our water comes from. It's essential to the community. So, having such a great facility and expert staff coming on board is very important. So, we welcome you here and we wish you well.
Thank you.
No pressure. Yeah, no pressure. No, no, no pressure, but we do have award-winning water, you know.
So, I don't have to, you know, to give any speech, but what I should say is that I'm very grateful. I do appreciate the opportunity, and I am really looking forward to working here.
Welcome aboard. Welcome aboard.
And thank you as well. I'm looking forward to working with North Andover.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Congratulations, both of you.
Congrats and welcome to town.
Okay, can I lead now?
You can. There is no pressure, as fast as you can. Erica will lead you out at the end.
One more, though, right? Two more? No, one more.
John Verges is our new town engineer. John Verges is our new town engineer. He's coming from the city of Methuen, which we are becoming regulars at making our way through the city hall and finding highly qualified people. John also has North Andover ties. Very, very happy to bring John here. He comes from the private sector first, actually had some crossover with Bruce Tibido, they worked in the private sector together. And then, he's a professional engineer, a PE, something that's important to us. I was very impressed with John's communication skill, his connection to his family, and his knowledge of North Andover, so we're very happy to have John begin here, I believe on June 20th, do I have that right?
Correct.
That's good. I'll see if I can call the mayor and make that the 18th. But we're great to have John here to replace you.
He was very upset to lose him.
Thank you very much. I'm very excited about this opportunity, and as Mr. Maymore pointed out, I actually grew up in North Andover. My father was actually the superintendent of public work, so this is, this is a great opportunity, and I'm looking forward to being back in my hometown and working with all of you.
That's great.
Welcome back.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Congrats to all. End up serious that you can leave. No, really, you don't have to stay.
We won't take any notes.
No demerits if you leave, no.
Pens are down, you can leave. There's, oh, yeah. Madam Chairman, I'd like to introduce David Eisenthal, who's the town's financial advisor. We can introduce his staff here as well. It should be noted that for those folks who do and don't know David here at the board and at home, every community in Massachusetts has a municipal financial advisor. David works for Unibank, which represents somewhere north of 260 municipal entities in New England, probably the preeminent firm in New England for financial advisory services. An interesting anecdote or story about David is that I, although David's been here north of 15 years, I've been here four and a half years. But one of the things that made it easy for my transition here was that after I was offered the position, even though I didn't know anybody that worked in North Andover, I checked to find out who their auditing firm was and who their financial advisor was. And when I found out that David was the financial advisor, someone I had worked with since 1998, it gave me great comfort and reassurance that the community was in good hands. So, I appreciate that, and I've told you that, so, but it was important to me to make sure that we had the kinds of expertise in-house to make the community great. So, David shepherds us through the bond rating process, the sale of the bonds, those really long motions that lead to the sale of bonds that fund most of our capital plan. As the community knows or will continue to know, we've been fortunate enough to get a bond rating upgrade from AA+ to AAA, the highest rating available. It's great.
I think that's applause-worthy.
That's applause-worthy, yeah. And thought that it would be important that the board hear from David, who represents the community in the year of bond sale and debt management.
Thank you, Andrew, Madam Chair, members of the board. It is a pleasure to be here to talk about this very good news. Standard and Poor's did indeed upgrade the town's rating from AA+ to AAA in connection with an issuance of bonds. And in fact, a little bit later, I'll be asking the board to undertake a motion to award and execute bonds that were sold last Wednesday, and I could talk about that a little bit later as well. But basically, this upgrade reflects, in large part, S&amp;P's view of the town is much improved financially and much improved in terms of management policies and practices. We were able to drive this home in a meeting that was held with town management. We met a few weeks ago, in this room, in fact, with three analysts from Standard and Poor's. This meeting really drilled down into a lot of detail about the town's management practices, finances, economy, and so on. And then, we followed this with a tour of the town, and the analysts were able to see just what kind of economic development is happening here. And Eric Cefory, I think we saw here, also was a key part of that tour and meeting. S&amp;P had placed the town on positive outlook, which meant that if trends were to continue in 2015, that AAA was a very good possibility. But I think that Andrew and we did not want to take any chances, so we wanted to make sure that we had the most extensive dialogue that we could possibly have with Standard and Poor's, and we were able to accomplish this. We met with one of the analysts, a relatively senior member of the staff in Boston, and I was very pleased that he came to the meeting on May 25th. You know, a little bit of the history is, the town has had a long slog up. I mean, when I started working with the town, the rating was a straight single A from Standard and Poor's. Over the years, the town moved up, first in 2004 to A+, then 2008, from A+ to straight AA. There was a little bit of a bump in the road late in the last decade, when S&amp;P revised the outlook from stable to negative. This was in a period when the town's reserves were at a level of about 1% to 4% of expenses. And I remember I actually met, I see, one or two members of the board who were there then, to talk about what it would take to get back to a stable or a positive direction. And January of 11, the town did move from negative back to stable. You know, this march upward really has been driven by the finances. I mentioned the 1-4% of expenditures. The, as of June 30 of 2015, available reserves were 15% of expenditures, which is in the Standard and Poor's scoring system, that's considered to be very strong, and I think that that was one of the key elements in the upgrade. But they also looked at cash, liquidity, and debt indicators. Management practices, they feel that the town's approach to budgeting is very strong in terms of trend analysis and conservatism of assumptions. The fact that the management and the board maintain an ongoing fiscal oversight during the fiscal year to make sure that no problems develop. And they also look at the very strong budgetary and capital planning as being strong elements of the group of practices and policies of the town. And finally, the economy of the town has performed well, and we were able to show that North Andover fits very comfortably into the cohort of AAA communities, both in terms of tax base and personal income. So, I think all of these things came together and produced a very good result for the town, and hopefully, this AAA will continue to produce good results for the town when it comes to the capital markets.
Fantastic. Maybe you could tell this room and people at home, how many, what's the percentage of communities in Massachusetts that have attained the AAA bond?
Well, it's actually a growing number. There are about 50 communities now, but it is an elite, you know, it is the most wealthy, well-managed communities in Massachusetts have the S&amp;P AAA. Part of this is that S&amp;P really views the Massachusetts economy very positively. The term they use is "a broad and diverse economy," and they see North Andover as being part of that broad and diverse economy. So, and that's really helped a lot of communities along. There are many, there are significantly more AA pluses, so you have moved from a larger group to a smaller group, but it is still a very, it is the wealthiest and best-run communities in the state that are the AAA's from S&amp;P.
That's great. That's great. Thank you for guiding us along the way. Again, congratulations to our town manager and our boards and this board for, as you said, that's a word I didn't use, I always said it's been a long, tough haul, you said slog, and I think slog is probably a better word. It's been, it's been long, but we knew we wanted it, and we just kept chipping away and chipping away.
I really think that, you know, I'm going to point to Andrew, Lynn Savage.
Yeah.
The two of them, I think, honestly deserve a lot of credit. I mean, and I think Andrew's approach, what I understand is that his approach to bringing people together, bringing the policymakers together, the boards, the other stakeholders in the community together, I think has been very effective and has been one of the reasons here we've looked at this upgrade.
Sustainable government.
Yeah, that's our favorite buzzword, sustainable.
David always states the hand, but the reality is, we do recognize for the first 10 years of this particular century, how difficult it was when boards couldn't agree, right? So, the fact that we've had four consensus budgets, that we can talk about these things, hammer it out, and come in a productive way, we know town meeting respects, because a couple of times we've brought arguments to the floor, they don't seem so happy at us that we're bringing arguments to those floors. So, the fact that we do things well together, finance committee, school committee, Board of Selectmen, Lynn's been fantastic, you're right. I think we're very fortunate, and it is an indication for me that, I think this is really the message here, we've, you know, we're climbing up the hill, and we've got to some place where some folks would believe that we're at the top of the hill. The point now is you can't come down the top of the hill, right? It's something you never want to leave. So, the important message for all of us is that sustainability, something actually mentioned in the S&amp;P report, was sustainability. For us, we can't lose that. We need to look at what's got us here and continue to replicate it, not get impatient about it, not get greedy about it, recognize the significance of what we've accomplished as a group, and have an interest to want to maintain that for this generation and the next. So, it's great. It's great to be part of a group.
I think.
Good stuff.
And I think I'll step back, and I guess later on in the agenda is the consideration of the, of the award and execution of the bonds.
Yes. Yeah. First item.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's fantastic. Good stuff. So, next will be our annual update from the planning board. I think John Simons is here this evening.
Talk back, John.
Yeah.
Could do it faster than that time. So, what I'd like to do is talk off the nice presentation that the planning department helped me put together. I'd like to talk a little bit about what's happened over the past year, and then a little bit about things going forward. And just to give you a little bit of background, there's three types of projects that we typically see in the planning board, at the risk of oversimplifying. We see site plan reviews, which you see on this slide, which are reviews of commercial projects. And we really there look at things like the building, the traffic, the drainage, and so forth. It's not really, the uses are generally allowed by rights, so we're just looking at putting together a good project. The second category, which you'll see is subdivisions, which is on the next page, and the third category, which we don't have a slide for, is watershed special permits. And sometimes you'll see them combined with site plan review or with subdivisions as well. But those are the three, three major categories. The first two projects on Turnpike Street, I don't want to really go into in very much detail, other than to say that periodically, we get projects on Turnpike Street, 114, and we spent a lot of time on these two projects in working the aesthetics in the parking and the drainage and so forth, and we think we've come up with a good product. But I'd like to talk a little bit more about Four High Street, because I think that is absolutely critical to the future of growth and development of the town, and frankly, to the development of the downtown. It's the Davis and Ferber Mills. I think we're blessed with having an excellent, excellent developer there, who has worked very closely with us over the last few years in terms of that project, and we want to continue to work with them as we undergo the build-out of that property over the next five or more years. And I think, you know, we work very closely with the planning department, with Eric and the team on that, because this is really going to be critical. It's, I think has the potential to stimulate a lot of the development, not just there, but going into downtown as well. So, we view that as very important, and invest a lot of our time in it, so. I'll stop there if there's any questions related to that. If we could go to the next slide. Subdivisions, if this was 12, 13 years ago, we couldn't fit this on one page. Frankly, the biggest change in the time that I've been in the planning board is that during the '80s and the '90s, there were tons of subdivisions. Basically, these four, you could see how few there are, and some of them actually started. Matthew's Way was approved several years ago, when it's being built now. So, the pace of single-family residential has gone down tremendously. There's far less of it than there has been, partly, you know, as much as anything else, because there's not as much open space left, but there's also not the demand, and there's not the availability of properties for development, so that's where you see very few subdivisions anymore. But that used to be the core of what we did, but lately, it really hasn't been. We do see more watershed special permits. There's, sometimes there's related to new houses. In addition to subdivisions, there's some new house development that we see that are called formais, which are houses built on existing streets that don't have to go to the planning board for approval, but if it's in the watershed, they do. One of the things I want to talk about, a couple of the projects that we've seen in the watershed, we, there are a number of houses being built along, near Butcher Boy on that stretch of Grapevine Road, that's probably where we've seen more of them than anywhere else. And there, what we worry about really is the fact that they're being built on the hill. We want to make sure that there's no drainage impact into the lake and so forth, so we go through watershed special permits in excruciating detail because of the materiality and the significance to the town. But one of the other things that we've done is we stepped back a little bit, and we said, we have this zoning bylaw related to the watershed. How do we ensure that landowners that live in the watershed understand what the rules are? Because we don't want to do things in a heavy-handed way, but we have seen situations where landowners have clear-cut their property close to the lake and created problems, and what we want to do is try to educate people. So, we came up with this notion of a watershed mailer, and that's basically what was sent out to people that live in the watershed and explaining what the rules are. And we did that this past year, we don't really know, it was an experiment, we don't really know sort of how much of an impact it has, but we're doing one other thing, and this is incredibly exciting, I think, is that the, the town has measured the water quality in the lake for a long time, but it's not, the data's not been collated and compiled and so forth, and it actually, one of our members has worked with the DPW, we now have that data, and we're going to review it tomorrow night. So, we're going to be able to see exactly what spots along the lake have suffered deterioration over time, because the data is wonderful data. It'll tell you not only where the problems are, but what the trends are. And I think that's the best way to go after dealing with the problems and preserving the quality of the lake, is seeing where those problems are and taking corrective action where possible. So, we're really excited. If this were in two weeks, I would give you an answer on this, but we're actually going to review the data tomorrow night, so we're very excited about that.
Is it Mr. Boynton? Who's doing it?
Pete, yeah, Peter Boynton, yes, yes. He's done a wonderful, he's the harbor master.
That's how we wrote him into joining our boards, and then we hired him up.
Yes. So, yeah, Peter's done a wonderful job, and has put a lot of thought into it, so. Looking forward, let me talk about a few of the things, since I think we actually, there's quite a few things happening actually now, is the first one, in and of itself, is if you remember back from members that have been on the board in the past, the cell tower wars, and God, it was brutal at the planning board, to say the least. What has happened now is I think a lot of the carriers are changing their strategy, and they're moving, instead of these big freestanding towers, they've basically got these boxes about yay-high that they're going to put on telephone poles. And the first project came in several weeks ago to the planning board and explained the concept, 15 or 20 of them in different spots in the town. And it's a way actually to get coverage in micro neighborhoods, and it's actually, I think, a very interesting approach. We spent a fair amount of time with them, but obviously, this is a situation where the planning board has a role, but the Board of Selectmen have a role, because all the utilities and everything, basically, under the authority of the Board of Selectmen. We think the first one looked fine, seemed to make sense, we didn't see anything really in the end that was a problem, but I think you're going to see more of these, both with Verizon and other carriers, so I just mentioned that. Jumping down to the third, not so much the second one, everybody is familiar with the past solar proposal at Osgood Landing. They have come back with a modified version of it, and we will actually be starting that process tomorrow night, again, and obviously, very visible, material, large project. We believe that the new proposal is superior to the old one. We're cautiously optimistic, but until we actually see what they present tomorrow night, we won't know for sure, so. But that will be something that we will handle over the next few meetings of the planning board, so. Also, if you could just move to the next slide. A couple of the zoning changes that we approved this year will stimulate different projects. The Edgewood Project will come forward over the course of the next year. It will, I suspect it probably will not, given the timing where we are, it'll be probably closer towards the end of the year and actually get built next year, but they will be coming to the planning board for the dementia facility. Article 16, I want to actually spend a little bit more time on it, because this was the Fugietta Farm project, and it looks like they're actually going to move forward very quickly on that, and we're actually going to see the proposal in that very soon. So, it's a mixed-use product, project, partly residential, partly commercial. One of the things that I think that the developer in this case has actually done a fairly good job of is to work with the people in the neighborhood, because it is very visible, work with the neighborhood prior to town meeting, and I think basically, people felt reasonably comfortable. But we have told them that the most important thing is to have a very open, transparent process, let everything out. And I think one of the things that happened that actually was beneficial was that they, when they came to the planning board and explained their general approach for what they did, they actually, in one of the meetings here, they actually showed what their thought process was and what they were looking at and so forth, and I think it helped people understand how the sausage gets made, and I think it, again, it was very open. But that is a critical project for community development, you know, a lot of what we talked about earlier with maintaining the bond rating, this will have a positive impact on that, so. So, those are basically, sort of, that's kind of the story. Probably the one other thing that I want to mention that's not listed there is that we are working with the community development department to potentially update the master plan. The master plan has not been done in a long time. The master plan is not a panacea, so people have to be sort of taken a little bit in context, and one of the things that's always, that I've found based on past experience is that you need a few citizens, not necessarily members of the planning board who are very passionate about that, want to be engaged in it, and the other thing that you really want is a lot of community participation, and whether it's open meetings, or whether it's through newsletters or questionnaires to people, you really want to get a lot of community input for that process. But it's going to take a long time, and it's going to be an investment of money and effort, but potentially, it can come up with some good results, because it could maybe just slightly change the vector of where we're going in terms of commercial and residential development, so. So, that's basically where we are.
Just to give the board an update of that, so Eric is working with Ray on draft RFP. We'll circulate that to the planning board. The hope would be, by the end of the summer, we'll issue a request for proposals for companies to respond, to coordinate the master plan. Town meeting approved $100,000. We think that that's close, we'll see what happens over time. On average, from the research I've done in the last couple of days, 12 to 18 months to complete typically, you know, two to six public meetings, public hearings where residents will be involved. So, I think all the things you touched upon will be included, and we'll certainly circulate a draft of the RFP to the planning board before it gets issued through procurement.
But this actually comes under the purview of the planning board with our, with the town's assistance.
Yep.
Right, that technically, that's a mandate of the planning board, yeah, so.
Yeah, but I don't think people realize it's long, it's labor-intensive, and it's not cheap, it's $100,000. But the other thing, too, I think there was misconceptions that it was never tweaked along the way. I mean, it was certainly tweaked in actions and deeds along the way to respond to the different changes in town, so it wasn't a stagnant report that just...
No, I mean, it's a framework, and I mean, if you look back at some of the past ones that were done, probably where it had the most impact on zoning was when a lot of the watershed zoning got done back in the late '80s and early '90s. That was probably the area where there's most correlation between the master plan and changes in zoning. I think now, you know, we have enough experience and continuity in the planning board to realize where some of the commercial zones that we've created, where they work well and where they don't work well. And I think some of that insight is things that we would want to be able to get into the plan, and, you know... And, you know, as I said, I'm, I'm particularly excited about David, the whole Davidson-Farber complex, because I absolutely think that's the most, that's the jewel property in this town, and that's what we can leverage into something more than that. And as part of the master plan, if we can do some things to help us along, I think that'll be a big plus.
That's good.
So John, at the last meeting, there were two chairs, the Board of Health and Conservation Commission, and I asked, made a point, I guess it wasn't a question, and I'll do the same for you and for Mr. Manzi who's behind you. It's, this board rotates its chair on an annual basis. School committee does the same, finance committee every two years. I think we've talked about enough to, to, to comment on behalf of the group, that it's, it's our opinion that that's a good thing. It doesn't have to follow exactly the model, as I can follow the school committee or finance committee, but that, with no disrespect to the chairs who I think are...
Fair enough. I think, I think that's, that's useful. I think that for, it's now ripe. I mean, one of the things that happened with the planning board is there was virtually a complete turnover of the board, except for me. And interestingly enough, if you look at my tenure on this board, until the last 10 years, I think I was probably only chairman for two or three years, so I, I haven't been. But I think time's ripe, we have members that have been on for long enough time, and, you know, whether it's this year or next year, we definitely, I'm not a glutton for punishment forever, so.
And you've done a great job, so it's not a comment on that, it's just, if we're commenting internally about things, the common term we use internally is succession planning. Having you on the board while someone else comes and learns from you is a heck of a lot better than someday finding that John Smolak is, excuse me, that John Simons is leaving the board and no one's behind him with the same level of experience, so. So while you're there, and stay as long as you can, having someone learn from you is important.
Good. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
See what happens when Mike Smolak sits over your shoulder? I combined an H.
We all know who you meant.
I didn't call him John Smolak Manzi, I could have kept on going through that.
All right, so next we have our zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Al Manzi.
Are you there?
Hello?
I don't have anything quite as fancy as Mr. Simons has.
Nothing fancy? We don't either.
Yeah.
I do, it's been on for a while though today, so I'm looking forward to taking it off. But thank you for having me. Basically, I think this is maybe the first time we've done a report like this, at least from what I can remember. I think it's a great idea.
Yes.
I would really be relying as to what we reported in the annual report to the town. We had 11 meetings, three variance requests, five special permits, three aggrieved parties. Our board meets monthly or by special meeting as needed. We tend, under Chapter 40A, we tend to hear petitions when the building inspector makes findings as it relates to dimensional issues, when someone wants to do something with their property that doesn't comport with a particular dimensional requirement as it relates to a zoning district. We will also have concurrent authority in various special permits as it relates to conversions of one to four families or different types of proposals, as it may be in the bylaw. Within the past year, we tended, we also hear aggrieved party petitions, parties that do not want to appeal a decision of the, of the building inspector that tends to have standing to do so. I would say we've heard more of those in the past year than we have in my recent tenure, the Osgood Solar petition, a sewer pump petition, and then the most recent one as it related to the selectmen's fees. I think that's still currently subject to litigation. I think our record has been pretty good over the years as it relates to litigation. We, we try to mitigate as many things as we can at the public hearing level. You know, with the cooperation of the planning board several years ago, I think maybe even Mr. Valencourt was on with us, in the R4 district, we were seeing a lot of conversions of one to two families, but we didn't really understand why. And did a little research into that, and it turned out under the R4 district, people were not permitted by zoning to have in-law suites. And that's something that the planning board was able to correct at the, at the town meeting level. So, you know, going forward, I think that, we also hear Chapter 40Bs, as those are the, the affordable petitions. At this point, I don't think we have any before us. We do get the notices that come in as it relates to when units are getting turned over in the affordability portion that we try to forward to you folks. That being said...
I've heard that in a long time, you have a 40B on Golden.
Right, it's been, it is.
It's on Okins in September.
It is. And since, you know, I think I've been on since 2004, so, you know, some years are busier than others, you know, and it depends on, on what's before us, and quite candidly, you know, whether, what petitions come to us not only depends upon how the bylaws may change from year to year at town meeting as it relates to the Board of Appeals' involvement, or whether there's a need for dimensional relief or not. But quite honestly, a lot depends on the findings made at the building department level and/or administrative denials. So, you know, whether something becomes jurisdictional to us, really, there's a building process first to determine that. And that's really, you know, you appoint us, so you know, you know how busy we are. We're a five-person board with three alternates. And that's sort of where we are in terms of our annual report. I'm not sure if there's anything specific you'd like me to comment on.
Well, I've attended a couple of meetings, sorry, and they're great, I appreciate the, they find them interesting. I sometimes rather watch from home than being in the room, but I find them really interesting, and I appreciate the professionalism of the board shows. I think you as chair has demonstrated that as well. I don't think people realize unless you're directly impacted by a 40B project, how complex one of those applications is, complex a permit.
Oh, sure. They can be very, you know, I mean, effectively, you know, the, the state designates the Board of Appeals to act effectively for all boards, whether it be the Board of Health or the Planning Board. And we've seen different types of projects over the years. We've seen the Orchard Village Project actually presented a definitive subdivision plan where we effectively had to stand in the shoes of the planning board, which was relatively new for us in that context, because we don't do that sort of stuff too often. And we've seen different types, different types of projects. But, you know, also as it relates to the simple request, the, the Chapter 40A request, when someone needs to put a, put a porch on their house, or they want to do an addition, and, you know, they're a foot short of where they need to be. But, you know, it's, it's heavily regulated by statute. I mean, in, in the abutters, you know, the abutters that get noticed are 300 feet in any direction. So depending upon where you live, that could be a lot of people that have to come in. So it's just, we, we take each application on its own merits. I try to run a fair and impartial hearing. Not everybody's always happy, but that's, that's the goal.
I don't think that works, stay a little longer.
We did, we did. Sometimes we're looking for an emergency exit. And, you know, we do, and we do work quite heavily with town council, and I think, you know, based on the changes that are being made at your level with respect to town council, one of the things I'd like to be able to report back to my board at, at the next meeting is, you know, sort of where that stands, and what involvement the land use boards would have at all as it relates to the in-house council or any special council that may be hired.
The board is, the board took up last meeting, what will happen with special councils is going to be an RFQ, Request for Qualifications issued on special council. That hasn't been drafted yet. The board will approve, because they're the appointing authority, the board will approve the request for qualifications before it gets issued. When it gets issued, we'll get the responses back to the request for qualifications. There'll be obviously typical special council categories, could be land use, could be labor as examples. And then the board will decide which combination of special councils that they will hire as the appointing authority.
And one of my hopes is that, you know, for greater access, the boards like yourself to, for that local, I mean, for the in-house attorney to be able to access that more regularly.
Well, I can't speak for any of the other chairman, but I, I would certainly hope that there's, there's some process with which we could all be involved in that. As you narrow down those findings, you know, I think it's very important, particularly on the land use side, that we would be able to be involved and at least offer our opinions as it relates to either the qualifications, or where it's going, or with the selection process, because, you know, it's, it's such a heavily important aspect in terms of what happens in the town, at least in our narrow view. I mean, the land use can lead to a lot of litigation, so, you know, if you're not, you know, if you're not selecting the right firm or the right person, you know, it, it could be a long road somewhere down the line, so I would certainly advocate for that.
All right. Well, I wouldn't feel like completing unless I said the same thing I've said to the previous other chairman. We appreciate the time you've served as chair. We think it is important to rotate the chair. I know on occasions you've had to recuse yourself, and Ellen has filled in the seat. We appreciate that as well. But we think there's a process. We think it's better for the community in the long run if there's some level of regular rotation of the chair.
Yeah, of course. I mean, you know, you can't live here for 42 years without having to recuse yourself in one capacity or another from time to time.
Some doozies, right?
Ellen, and in fact...
Yes.
And in fact, to that point, you know, I mean, I think that when we took over, God bless Mr. Sullivan, he and Mr. Saul, they had done a great job, you know, and Mr. Ford and those of us. And, you know, when we, when we came on, there was sort of that, that transitional piece that was lacking, I think that you talked about, and Ellen had chaired for years. And quite candidly, I think I offer the job to anybody that wants it every year, so. And I don't know how many more years, much like Mr. Simons, I don't know how many more years I would be a glutton for punishment, but we do, you know, we, we take our roles seriously, and we do the best we can.
Well, we as, as an appointments subcommittee have been very deliberate with individuals for any, any of the boards that we interviewed, asking them, and I know that this is a bit much earlier tonight, but town managers, we have the point of saying, anybody that we appoint, we would hope they would join the board with the expectation that at some point they may serve as a chairman, because it helps, I mean, I think we echo what was said earlier to...
Absolutely.
To John Simons about, you know, if you get sick of it at one point, decide to leave, there's a huge vacuum of knowledge. It would be important again to have that rotation, again, because our elected board is to conduct it, and I think it's good to get into that habit and, and help spread that knowledge and experience, so.
Without, without a doubt, I mean, you know, continuity is very important. We, you know, we have adopted rules and regulations, probably like every other land use board, and we organize every January. So that's just, I, I agree with you. I think continuity and, and, and new views are very important.
We'll probably send a reminder memo on behalf of the board and I later on in the fall just to the board, so about that.
Anything else I can offer you?
No, we thank you for coming this evening.
Well, thank you for having me.
Yeah, have a good night. Next is a July through December meeting, which are minimal.
Yes.
July and August. Oh, no, we pick back up in August.
Well, there's five calendar weeks in August, that's probably the only reason that we end up with two meetings. Normally that would fall into September, so normally there's, there's one there, but...
Really, Halloween?
Oh, how about Thanksgiving?
We figured you would move Halloween, we figured you would move Halloween till the 21st.
We're not having it on Halloween, all right? Bad enough, we trick or treat, and they never get my way. No, just kidding.
No, we, we do Halloween on Halloween.
But aren't you going to have Halloween on Saturday?
I never get Halloween off, no.
I really don't.
Look at now, this is a segue in, if we have a board meeting, Halloween the prior Saturday, trick or treating, brilliant.
Nice to know. But you saw this talk, August 8th, I'm not, I'm on a town August 8th.
Okay, so that's going to have to be a change of the bat. Well, as always, I think all members know that we try to accommodate everyone as to the best of our ability. You can do this on the side, too. But Halloween is something we probably...
Come on.
I'm with you, I'm with you. Let's have a meeting and trick or treat on Saturday night. There's a few of us left with younger children. Well, he's 13.
He's not watching TV, you're in trouble. So if we can start with the August 8th, we will deal with Halloween, I guess, we'll, we'll get the direction Halloween. Anybody have an issue with the 15th? Because there's no reason the 8th can't be the August 15th.
Uh, no.
Okay, so why don't we move forward with July 18th and August 15th? We'll hold the 29th, because otherwise we get into the holiday.
Yeah, we don't...
And we'll hold the rest, and then we will further evaluate the board's role as it relates to Halloween.
Okay.
And manage through that.
There's a problem with December 5th.
Now, if we get to December 5th, we're all feeling pretty good. Something's bound to change between then and...
It may so. This is December 19th and not like the 24th or something.
Yeah, good for that.
We figured you'd vote Christmas and Thanksgiving as well.
I, I like to see Halloween on here, which means, you know.
So we'll move forward with that one change and come back to, we'll strike August 30, October 31st for now and, and work around that date.
I mean, I suppose that could even be shifted. I think we should always keep in mind that we could do Tuesday.
We could have a meeting on Tuesday.
Even on the 15th, we could do the 9th, or, you know, if, if you were back in time. But, I mean, I think we should be open and keeping those, that, if it's, you know, Tuesday or Wednesday, if, if too, I mean, for staff as well.
These are all soft dates, so any change that needs to happen will happen. They're not, they're not etched in stone.
What is etched in stone, though, is June 20th.
Yes.
Okay.
Of which, I, I am out on June 20th, so...
Oh, that's right.
Mr. Stilley will be sitting in this seat during that.
That's right, sunny and shit, you and me, babe.
I can't do the visual on that one, so they were all...
I know, which one's, who's sunny and who's share? You have the dark hair.
I just can't do it.
All right, moving on. We're going to move on to our consent items, and, but we'll make sure Selectman Valencourt's all set on his date, and we'll be good to go. The 20th is next, so, let's see, we're going to vote to sell our general obligation bonds of the town and approve the refunding of our general obligation bonds.
So David, do you want to comment on this? I typically read the motion, because it goes on for a while, but if...
It's up to you, the chair, how you want to see. I do have a stack of...
The document's got it.
I did a request that Mr. Mailer will run on these, because that Mr. Conway can sign them.
Yes.
Well, we, we do traditionally have someone, any of the selectmen would like to...
Clerk.
Stand in my place and, and read the vote of the board. More than happy to have you.
You go right ahead.
Will you sign these votes today?
We'll do that before, at the end of the meeting. But we can pass them around.
One vote is tomorrow's.
He's got the vote?
He's got the vote. Phil can read the vote.
Go for it.
So it's a, if we're exactly the same as it is, not that, but though personally?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the town of North Andover, Massachusetts. The town certified that at a meeting of the board held June 6, 2016, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody. Voted that in order to reduce interest costs, the treasurer has authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority to refund the town's $8,72,134 general obligation bonds dated June 1, 2009, maturing in the years 2020 through 2023, inclusive 2026 and 2029, in the aggregate principal amount of $1,615,000 collectively, the refunded bonds, and that the proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal, redemption premium, if any, and interest on the refunded bonds and cost of issuance of the refunding bonds. Further voted that the sale of the $8,325,047 general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2016 bonds of the town dated June 15, 2016, the bonds to Robert W. Baird &amp; Co., Inc., at the price of $8,522,313.21, and accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed, the bond shall be payable on June 15, uh, excuse me, January 15 of the years, and then the principal amounts, and bear interest at the respective rates as follows. Do I have to read each one of those respective rates?
Nope.
Okay. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated May 23, 2016, and a final official statement dated June 1, 2016. The official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer, be and hereby are ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted that the, the bonds shall be subject to the redemption at the option of the town upon such terms and conditions as are set forth in the official statement. Further voted to authorize the execution and delivery of a refunding escrow agreement to be dated June 15, 2016, between the town and U.S. Bank National Association as refunding escrow agent. Further voted that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15C2-12 in such form as may be approved by bond counsel to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by the reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the treasurer and bond counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds. Further voted that each member of the board of selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them, or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the date, excuse me, the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk, and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours and are on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed, approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29 dot O3 2B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remain so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberation or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with the general law, Chapter 30A, Section 18 through 25, as amended, dated June 6, 2016.
All those in favor, right?
Anthony, you need a second.
Second.
What's the motion?
Oh, that's a motion.
I'll second. Thank God it was seconded. All for nothing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Yeah, but do we have an amount associated with the refunding?
You want to just talk for a second about this?
Yeah, it'd be great.
Yes, I was going to ask that, since our AAA, is that what you mean? Oh, just the general refunding, okay.
Kristi, why don't you come join me? Kristi Jenga works with us at Unibank Fiscal Advisory Services, and she was part of the team that helped with the presentation to standard and boards and in working on the bond issue, preparing the disclosure, and so I thought I'd make sure we introduce her. Yes, the town is refunding the last 10 maturities of the 2009 bonds, about 1.7 million in bonds. Town's going to save $190,000, which is about 12% of the present value, it's about 12% of the amount that's being refunded, which is pretty impressive. Did you want to, I mean, the winning bid, the true interest cost, was just under 1.87% for a 20-year issue, so rates continue to be good and the AAA didn't hurt. So I have here.
Did the AAA contribute to?
Sure. I mean, I think.
What do you think the difference is?
It was probably in the order of a tenth or a fifth of a point, because I think you certainly did better than I had been projecting beforehand when I was comparing, doing the projections based on the AA+ rating rather than the AAA. So I think, yeah, I think that they're, I think that safely a tenth to a fifth of a point.
That's great. So for the folks at home, refunding is in essence refinancing. So we regularly take a look at the bonds that were previously issued to determine whether or not the market would yield a better, provide us a better yield on those bonds. And so part of David's role, Unibank's role, is to look at our bonds on a regular basis, try to determine if we could refinance or refund those bonds at a lower cost of capital. And in this particular case, that refinancing saved us $190,000, which is great. And what was the tick?
Well, on the refunding, it was probably, see if I can tell you. On the refunding itself, it was less than that. It was, the tick on that was 157.
Wow.
The whole bond issue was 186, 187.
Super.
So our bonds are costing us about 1.87%? Pretty cheap?
That's pretty cheap.
Great.
Great.
So should I give to Ray?
Anyone on that side of the table?
He has about 10 pounds of paper there.
You'll all be staying out of school for.
Thank you very much.
Both of you.
Have a good evening, all. Thank you very much.
Enjoy your ride back.
Great news. Moving on to additionally good news. We have come to agreement with our professional librarians, I see.
Yes, we recommend favorable action.
Okay. Do I have a motion as such? This contract will run July 2016 to June 2019.
Next three years.
Next three years, great.
Chairman, I'll move that the board of selectmen, that's how they collect the bargaining agreement between the town of North Andover and SCME Council 93, Local 2978, professional librarians for the period July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2019. Can I give you a break?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
We've also come to agreement with our communication officers.
Same term.
So I'll make that motion, too. Move that the board of selectmen ratify the collective bargaining agreement between the town of North Andover and NEPBA Local 102 Communications Offices for the period July 1, 2016 through June 30, 2019.
Great.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we have two more of the six units left. We're hoping to have at least one of those by your next meeting.
Okay, so thank you.
Great job, again, as usual.
Cleaning this up and getting them done. Remember the days?
Oh, yeah.
It could be brutal, even with librarians. So bravo, bravo. We are looking to accept a very generous donation from the Joseph and Herman Youth Center to the youth and recreation services for the summer, as well as Adopt a Youth for Summer Fund program. Do I have a motion for this generous donation?
Madam Chair, I move to accept the donation from the Joseph and Herman Youth Center.
Second.
Both donations.
Inc.
Because it's a corporation, it's not the center that's making the donation.
In total?
I'll second that.
Second that? Just for informational purposes, the donation is $11,549.80. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fuel-efficient vehicle use policy.
Madam Chairman, as you may recall, at our most recent town meeting, we adopted the Stretch Code.
Yes.
That was the, technically, the fifth of five steps to become a green community. We would be the 162nd community in the Commonwealth of a Green Community. With that comes entitlement grants, about $150,000, $200,000 a year that we reinvest in our assets to become increasingly efficient from an energy perspective. This policy actually represents one of the policy items that is remaining. It is a requirement of the Green Communities Act. The fuel-efficient vehicle use policy is required adoption by both the board of selectmen and the school committee. The overview is this: We're required to make sure that our fleet is fuel-efficient, but certain vehicles are exempted, and it's the ones you would expect.
Right.
So public safety vehicles, not too many fuel-efficient fire trucks.
No.
Okay. Very large trucks, yet, I'm sure someday, very large trucks, front-end loaders, above a certain size, most commonly used by our Public Works Department, typically exempt. When you narrow down the pool, it comes down to what I would call operational vehicles, the smaller SUVs we have for the Building Department, the Conservation Department. That's typically what it narrows down to is vehicles, and this is a prospective policy. So it would have to be any replacement vehicle. I can tell you the vehicles we use today, which are two-wheel-drive Equinoxes, that form of an SUV needs to have an average fuel economy of 21. Under this policy, they already have a 24. So we're in essence compliant with the policy, but the policy is necessary, and we'll make sure that moving forward, we continue to comply with the policy. It would be my hope with some of these grant dollars, that we eventually would invest in some alternative fuel vehicles. We're finding that some of our vehicles, certainly the inspection vehicles, may put 1,200 miles a year on a vehicle. And so something that might include an electric vehicle, so it could easily be used where it's not, you know, you're not traveling huge distances in a day. But this particular policy is a requirement of the Green Communities Act, but it really isn't setting any difficult bar for us to cross, quite frankly.
I already checked with the manager on the police, well, not the government, the pre-ist.
No. Although that pre-ist commercial looks like they could.
The pre-ist commercial, that's all right, with the police cars.
With the police cars. All right, do I?
Maybe Teslas instead.
Yes.
That would be nice.
That would be.
Will that selectmen adopt the fuel-efficient vehicle use policy as presented?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The school committee will be voting on this at their June 16 meeting.
Great. Next, we have National Grid requests the approval to excavate from 595 Boxford Street to Wellington Way for installing new gas mains.
Is that a new proposal?
That is, right? We just discussed the new development.
Yes, it's up on the street.
Right.
That's Steve Galbeck, Gas Supervisor out of Lowell, National Grid.
Great. Can you give us little details about the project? When are you going to start and all that?
We will start when you, we have a permit to start on the road. But we need to lay about 200 feet to get to Wellington Way. On the side of the road, it was just paved, so our goal is not to disturb any of the new pavement.
Okay. Public Works, maybe a police. Okay. Any questions? Do I have an approval? I mean, do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll move the board of selectmen approve the request from National Grid to excavate from 595 Boxford Street to Wellington Way for the purpose of installing new gas mains, subject to conditions outlined by the Police Department and the PW on the May 23, 2016.
All those in favor?
Just under the discussion, so what's the method you're going to use to replace or install the main?
The same.
Is it going to be trench, with trench repaved?
We're going to trench on the side of the road.
And is the side of the road being repaved as well?
No.
So it's outside where we're.
It's outside the pavement.
That's why I was just asking the man, we're not taking up.
No.
No.
I just want to make sure that was clear for the record.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, you're awesome.
Thank you very much.
The solution of our audit committee that was created during more trying times.
So the memo in your package that comes from Chairman Watson sort of outlines the brief history, I guess, of the committee and ultimately the suggestion that the committee, that in essence, that the board of selectmen take back what they delegated back in '08. The selectmen, like the legal counsel, is responsible for the auditing services. So the selectmen would take on the responsibility for issuing an RFP for an audit firm every so many years. Selecting that audit firm, the audit committee would, and the audit firm would come back with their draft audit. My office, quite frankly, has no role in the audit. We sit back, we wait for the financial draft to come forward. The audit engagement coordinator in this town is Lynn Savage, who's also here appointing. That's common, it's usually the town accountant, city auditor, that's the common practice. They'd come back with a draft for you folks to review, make sure you're happy with it. Ultimately, that would lead to a final version, and then they would do what they annually do, that one of the principals of the firm would come to a meeting and describe what was contained in the audit. So we're taking back what, in essence, was delegated to a committee.
Yeah, so serving on that committee, I mean, the duties were pretty minimal. We met a couple of times a year, the audit was already complete, even when we were choosing a new, a new firm, that was all done through the IFP process, I believe it was, and there really was not much that we could do because it was all governed by that process. We had to take the bidder that meant the qualifications at the lowest bidder, so there was really no selection there. So there was very little involvement. Maybe some of the other members of that board might not agree, but I think for the most part, there was really not a lot that that board was able to do.
I sat on it prior to Selectman Valencourt, sitting on it, I served on it as well. I echo his sentiment, which is why I brought this forth. There's, it's also difficult to get people to even serve anymore on it because it's minimal duties and I waste people's time. Correct.
I have forwarded a copy of this to the school committee, who took it up under a discussion item, because it wasn't listed as a voted item on their agenda. The chairman forwarded to me that it's the opinion of the school committee, that they share the sentiments of Chairman Watson, that their last two serving members, who were, I believe, David Torese is most recent, and Stan Limpert, both indicated that it felt that it sort of ran its course and had come in during a particular time, but was a mystery.
Any amendments or?
I'll move that the board will forward and dissolve the audit committee.
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know what you were saying.
You need help?
Hold on. Are we driving Don so crazy he's going to jump out the window?
I think you picked the wrong window, it's a little short.
There we go.
Ron DeSantis.
Low, low.
Move that the board of selectmen dissolve the audit committee established by the board on September 8, 2008, as amended on May 23, 2011, and delegate back to the board of selectmen the responsibilities of reviewing the RFPs for the audit firms, selecting the desired firm to conduct the audit and approve the draft audit prepared by the selected audit firm.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The audit committee is dissolved. Okay, we are now looking to adopt the Regional Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan of 2016.
I would recommend that suggested by Erica Foray, Director of Community and Economic Development, that you adopt the Merrimack Valley Prepared Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. If you ask me to explain it in detail, I cannot.
Yeah, I was just going to ask that.
Is our emergency meeting?
Yes.
I would think that it would be.
Yes, they are.
So basically, it's what, just a catastrophic something that crosses community lines or whatever?
It's now a requirement that there be a regional planning initiative around certain disaster response.
And it continues to give us access to funding, right?
Yes.
That there is an emergency, a disaster.
Correct. If we were to seek certain grant funding and we didn't have a mitigation plan, we could not.
As it's so stop that order.
No, they certainly don't. We have to be able to cross them all together regionally. Do I have a motion to accept?
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great. Do I have a motion to move into licensing? Oh, we need to sign that, though, right? Do you want, we'll sign it with the rest? Okay.
I'm going to be here for a while.
Motion to move into licensing?
Second.
All those in favor? We are now in licensing.
Okay. First on the agenda is a request from Smolak Farms. Let me pull it up. Give me one second here. So there's an agenda from, I mean, there's a request from Smolak Farms to, for an all liquor license for three areas of the farm, the tent area and Pine Grove, so is that, we're calling that as one area, tent and Pine Grove is one area? So it's all enclosed in the tent, right?
All around the tent, because there's some cocktails that are outside of the tent and on the grounds. It's all enclosed by either fences or pond.
Okay. The barn area and the farm stand area.
Right.
Okay. And what you're requesting is all liquor license, seven days a week?
Mm-hmm.
Twenty, uh?
Twenty-five hours a day, I hope not.
No, no, I'm going to say 12 months a year, all throughout the year.
At this point, yeah. So far, we're not open from December till probably April or May. So I don't know that there's going to be any need for it, but what I was told is that when I came in here to apply for this, to apply for what potentially might happen, we may, we probably are going to add on to the farm stand. And so that's all part of this, because it may be open 12 months out of the year.
Okay. So what is the logic and the thinking behind the all liquor license for all the locations? What's the business plan? What's the business model?
Real simple. We come in, as you're aware, every month or every couple of weeks for a one-day liquor license. This was suggested either by somebody on the board here or somebody in the town clerk's office. They said, you know, you come in all the time, Stevens Estate has something similar, why don't you just get this? And that's exactly why. I went back in my records, and the first, it was first suggested to me in 2014. And so that's exactly, and this is, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is Attorney Kate Connolly.
Madam Chairman, I'm Selectman Kate Connolly, I'm here on behalf of Smolak Farms. And I wanted to just point out, further description of the three locations are in the package that we submitted with respect to the Town and North Andover Board of Selectmen General License Application. There's a page, sort of halfway through the package, that you each should have, right before, a picture that shows the three locations. They're labeled A, down by the pond, and that is the tent area and Pine Grove. Then B is the barn area, up here. And pretty close to B, area C, is the farm stand area. And as Michael said, the main purpose of this is for efficiency for not only Smolak Farms, but this board, not having to give separate one-day license applications every time they have a party or wedding or some other event at any of those venues.
Okay. I mean, I know, you know, we do often for the tent area and occasionally for the barn, but I don't think we've ever approved or had an application for the farm stand area. So what's the, what's the business model there? What's the intent of that?
Sure, sure. Quite simply, on the, when I first approached this...
Hold that comment for a second.
When I first approached this, there was, there was a terraced area on the backside of the farm stand. Sometimes we have used those for showers. Now, honestly, I don't know whether there was alcohol involved.
Playground?
No, no, no. Oh, God, no. On the backside of the farm stand is like a terrace, right off the greenhouse.
Oh, yes, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and there's a fence around there. And so when I was approaching this, it was suggested that I just apply for any potential down the road. And so I had originally just applied for that outside area. And I forget whether Eric Foray had said, well, if you're going to do that, he wanted, at some base suggestion, I'm not exactly sure who, that I include the whole building. And that's why I did it.
So again, so the intent is that you're not going to be selling alcohol there for people coming to, it's for events?
Right.
It's for events that you're having, okay.
So, I come in for a beer and a donut?
In an application to be paid for. Yeah, no.
So the farm stand, I think, is, for me, it's, the farm stand is throwing me. You're very vague on, oh, we may expand.
Oh, we're going to expand.
Okay.
Basically, it's the footprint of the greenhouse is going to be replaced with a, with a building that will allow us to be open 12 months out of the year.
With functions?
No.
Well, then why would you need a liquor license if you're not going to have functions?
On the backside is a terrace. And that's, I specifically was directing it towards that to begin with. And then, then whoever, I think it was Eric, said that you should include all this. I just would rather not ask, since Eric's not here, the implication that Eric is making suggestions on the application, I just want to avoid that. Oh, that's fine with me. It gets to be uncertain.
Madam Chairman, can I say something?
Actually, take some...
Well, I'm the chair.
Yeah, they originally applied for a license. ABCC came back and told me three separate ones, for whatever reason, which is overkill of stuff, I'm concerned. So they did, they did want one liquor license. So I guess what they're doing with the farm stand, they have to cover those areas in case there's an overflow from, you know.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
The ABCC's response, really, was a question raised in our offices before the ABCC. You can't have one license controlling separate buildings on the same side.
Same with Merrimack Falls.
That's correct, unless they're attached.
Right.
That's exactly right.
So the single application had a fault in it, in that it was seeking one license for three separate physical buildings, and that's not allowed. So the reason the application was redone. So it's not an implication that the town or the ABCC is asking for three licenses. I just want to set the table correctly, right? The applicant's asking for three licenses on three separate locations.
Right. Michael, you better explain to me so I can understand. What type of event would happen at location C? I mean, you said on the terrace, and I think I'm picturing the right location, but...
Sure. It's a canopy area off the backside. Sometimes we have had showers out there, like baby showers and bridal showers and things like that, and it's simply that.
So it wouldn't be for functions, though, exclusively?
Right.
Okay. And then it is completely separate from the actual farm stand area where...
It is, it is separate from the, it's attached to it, but separate from...
The greenhouse separates the two, the two spaces?
Yeah.
But the barn, I believe, now the barn is not winterized, right?
Right.
Do you plan on winterizing it?
No.
Oh, you don't?
Well, not, not, there's no plans yet, right.
So I guess this might be, there won't be any permanent serving facilities there, right? Everything you bring, it will always be brought in for an event.
They're for events, that's correct.
Right. So there won't be anything, there's not going to be a bar set up with taps on the other side of the...
Right, it will not be beer and a donut, no.
Right.
I mean, that clears it up very clearly for me, that, if I can think of it that way, that it's, it'll always be brought in for an event, and then on a regular Sunday morning, there's not going to be beer and donuts.
Right, that's what I couldn't get that.
You're serving food on the terrace, too, is that...
Right.
So what is it, is it lunches or is it breakfasts where they're serving mimosas or what?
You mean, in terms of, in terms of an event?
Yes.
Yes, it would be, it would be, I'm not all that good at showers and wedding showers and bridal showers and that kind of stuff, but it would be that sort of thing, whatever they serve at those things, if, if that happens. Because if there's spillover, if we're not able to accommodate them in one area, it's a small venue that works very well for something like that. It's pretty, it's got a nice vista, and it's kind of separated and off by itself.
So you'll have caterers and...
Yeah, caterers, or we'll do it ourselves. Just a technical correction. Every facility under independent license must have an independent storage location, is that correct? So the facility, I just, again, I want to make sure the conversation is...
Sure.
Sort of on the facts of an application. So the, any of the facilities will be, all of the facilities will be required to have an independent storage location on that facility.
Okay.
That's a requirement under the ABCC.
Correct.
It's not just carried in for the event. There needs to be a locked storage location on every individual facility.
Okay.
And it makes any difference.
Service won't happen unless there's an event.
Right, I just want you to...
Yeah.
And even, even just to expand on that...
How do you store the tent in a locked?
We have a building there.
Oh, there is a building on a tent?
Yeah.
I suppose, one of the questions that was asked of me is service. Who will be bartending? Who will be, I know in the past you've used butlers and...
We're pretty, honestly, we're pretty happy with Deb, so I don't see any need to change that.
Okay, so you would continue to use them?
Sure, sure. She knows what she's doing.
Now, if that were to change, and you bring in, and you hire a bartender or one of your people on, ends up having to, you know, bartend, these folks are going to be tip-certified and know what they're doing.
Oh, yeah. I can give you an example.
Not even on a last-minute, Michael.
Absolutely not.
No, they'll take the training class, and there is a...
Who on your staff is going to take the tips training so that you have backup?
Yeah, well, I can give you the, the history of this, with our WIM dinner series that we've done.
Yes.
Deb has not, Deb Ingalls has not been our bartender there. We have hired somebody independently. All of our servers have been tip-certified, and we have got to provide that sort of...
Right, who on your staff, your permanent staff, because this is going to become a permanent liquor establishment? Who on your permanent staff is going to be your expert, point person?
It would be, it would be Joanne Fiore.
Okay.
Is she already tip-certified or she will be tip-certified?
I don't honestly know. I'll find out. If she's not, she certainly will be.
In a short period of time.
Very short period of time.
Okay, any other questions from the board at this point? Okay, I see we have some folks from the, do we have anybody from the public that wants to speak to us?
I want to speak against it.
I understand that.
Yes, I do want to.
Did you make too much noise?
Monica?
Good evening. I'm Attorney Timothy J. Chivoni from Haverhill, and I represent Carl and Penelope Wigger at 790 Dale Street that abuts the tent. And I have been here before you numerous occasions concerning the use of the farm for its commercial uses, most specifically for the weddings and the dinners. And I think approximately three years ago, when I was here, there were 13 weddings a year, very few weddings. And it was said that this was to help them get by. And we had issues with noise, with the sound from the bands, and they dealt with it. It isn't perfect, but my clients and their friends, their butters and neighbors, have taken a step back because they've become frustrated. Now what is happening is you're going, you're considering granting an all-purpose liquor license. It has no limit. It's 12 months of the year. It's seven days a week. And that appears to me to be superseding your authority with regard to the zoning ordinance. There's nothing to say that they cannot run events in December, January, or whenever in the barn. There's nothing to say that they can't serve liquor while the farm stand is open, where people go for ice cream and to buy fruit and vegetables. There's nothing to say that they can't hold these whimsical dinners or whatever, seven days a week. I respectfully suggest that this has gone beyond being reasonable and everybody trying to get together in a community. Mr. Smolak just said that the liquor would be brought in for each event. If they're going to bring liquor in for each event, it isn't that difficult to come for a license. You would be granting and ignoring the zoning ordinance that you have. And I gave you a memo here to show you that what the zone is, just so you have some reference. You probably all know, you're Selectmen. This is a, an R1 zoning district. That is your highest and most expensive zoning district in the town of North Andover. That grants the highest quality of life, or at least the most expensive houses, and entices people to come to Andover, North Andover. Those people rely on your zoning ordinance before they invest in homes. Your bylaws say all other buildings and uses are expressly prohibited. And if you look on the table that I provided, and I know you're familiar with it, it specifically says that eating and drinking establishments are not permitted in the zone, nor are they permitted in any residential zone except in R6, and then only with a special permit. My clients and the other neighbors are trying to be good members of the community. But it seems that a permanent, all-purpose liquor license is disregarding the rights of the citizens and disregarding your zoning ordinance, which you have every, every need to uphold and respect. To have three sites, seven days a week, and to grant the license means they could have three events going on, seven days a week. I don't care what they say, what is said about what their intent is. I was here several years ago, and there were only 13 events. And then the next year, there were 19 events. And then the events were Friday night and Saturday night. There has to be a limit. And I respectfully, respectfully implore you on behalf of my clients and other neighbors that you consider changing the characteristics of this neighborhood. It would be, to me, it's just a complete utter disregard for your zoning ordinance. And I hope that you continue to work with Mr. Smolak and grant him day licenses so you have some control over it. Bridal showers, mixed with children purchasing ice creams, it doesn't float in my book, and I know it doesn't float in yours. So please, when you consider this, remember the zoning ordinance, and remember that there are neighbors that have relied on you and relied on your zoning ordinance before purchasing homes in certain neighborhoods that are protected. I thank you for your consideration.
I have one question, sir.
Yes, sir.
How do they feel about 40B developments?
That's fine, sir. If you want to have a 40B development, I look at that, quite frankly, as an affront. You want to have a restaurant or you want a 40B development?
I'm just asking...
You do what, you do what you have to do.
We are from North Andover, not Andover, sir, so...
I know you're from North Andover, and I know I've been sitting in a very hot room for almost an hour and a half. So, and the last time I sat for an hour and a half, you didn't inform me you were not, you were not going to have it, which I felt was a little bit cheap.
Respectfully, we didn't know that that was something that was sent out, and we made that clear with that meeting as Selectmen, that all five of us were...
I understand, but you can take that into consideration.
We do, and...
It's very warm in here this evening.
We did not know that that was...
And you did apologize, and I didn't raise it, but I think that's a slap. I'll tell you, I think that statement was a slap. And I respect you.
What statement?
How do I feel, how do my clients and I feel about a 40B?
You're worried about noise, you're worried about liquor licenses. You realize it's his power to put a complete 40B on there. How would they like about that?
That's not the question before you, sir. I'm not, I'm not here to argue. I'm here to present the point. Pardon?
Move approval on someone's...
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second it. I'll second it so we can continue the discussion.
For the, yeah, for the sake of discussion, I think, okay, we have a motion, we have a second, we have a discussion. I think I'd like to give the applicant a chance to reply to some of the comments that Attorney Chivoni has made, and, you know, I'll give you, I'll give you a few minutes to reply to that if you'd like.
The property is in the R1 zoning district, and it is 120 acres of one of the most beautiful farms in northeast Massachusetts. There are buffer zones all around it. The attorney who said he represented two abutters also said he represented others. I'd be curious to hear who they are, because we've heard no complaints from anyone else. Mr. Smolak has, his family has...
I think I heard him say he represents, you know, a husband and wife abutters, and they spoke with their friends. I don't think he said he represented others, so...
Okay, perhaps I misheard. That was, that was my only question. The property has been in the Smolak family since 1927. Michael has operated it for 35 years?
Forty-five.
Forty-five years. And over the years have added things to it, such as the bakery area, ice cream, starting to do these, these different events. When the issue of noise was brought up some years ago, and I'll let Michael describe in greater detail what he did, but they hired a sound expert to come in and listen at the events, put up...
We're all aware of that.
We're right, we're all aware.
That happened.
So you're probably familiar with much of this. I guess the only other thing that I would say, then, to counter some of the arguments, aside from the fact that this board does have the authority to grant a liquor license, is you also have the authority to put conditions on it, and we already agreed to certain hours of operation. And we already said that, as the chair already mentioned, it's not going to be donuts and beer. These are specific events at each of these three venues. We would have done, in fact, we did initially do one application, but as was already discussed, ABCC requires that if the buildings are not connected, you do three separate ones. That's why we have the three. It's not that we're planning on using all three at the same time, or to have alcohol being sold when something, when there's not an event such as a wedding or shower occurring.
But I do think that's part of the neighbors' concern, is that there will be three events at the same time, every weekend. And I, and I think that's a valid concern. It, it, it isn't a neighborhood that's used to three events on, you know, Saturday and Sunday, three different events. It's already a very, very busy location. It's a destination location already. So now you're bringing in additional, a wedding, a shower, a 40th birthday party. So I think that the neighbors have valid concerns in regards to that, that there will be three alcohol, three different alcohol events happening at the same time, and maybe two a day.
There's no difference between getting an all-alcohol license and coming in every time they're going to have an event. So some weekends, there are more events than others. But the whole purpose of this application is to avoid his time or his client's, or, I'm sorry, staff's time and your time on going over this discussion every time there's going to be an event, even if there's one event on the weekend.
But I think the marketing will change once the license is granted, let's be honest. The marketing of the farm will change. And I'm just putting out there what we all know to be true. Currently, it's not marketed in this manner, but I do believe the farm will be marketed differently when an all-inclusive license at three different venues, if granted. It's not, Michael doesn't market it that way, because now you have to come in for a daily liquor license. So the business will change, and it will change rapidly. So I think the neighbors have an honest concern about what that impact will be to the neighborhood. I'm not saying I'm anti, I'm just stating the obvious.
No, I understand, and I'll let Michael address this more specifically, but if you look on the website, this is one of the things that's marketed, in addition to people coming in and picking apples, kids' parties.
Right. I understand. But I've also seen, I've lived in town, you know, my 48 years, and I've been on this board for almost nine, and how the farm functioned even three years ago and how it functions this summer, a night and day. And that's fantastic. We want our businesses to grow, you know, in, in regard to, you know, in regards to economic development, I want all the businesses in town to, to grow and prosper and do well.
But on the other hand, we have to look out for the neighbors as well.
Correct.
I mean, and I'm agreeing with that. I mean, I have always been a supporter of the farm, you know that, but I think we do have a duty to the neighborhood as well, and to consider how this is going to affect the neighbors in the area by having...
And when I, and again, when we went around this before, I'll give you a little bit of feedback, that his client approached me at Butch Boy Market one day, or Penn Tucket Bank, and he said, you know, "I wanted to thank you." He said, "It is so much better." And, you know, that made me feel good, because, you know, I've always tried to do the right thing by the neighbors and by the town. And that neighborhood exists to the degree that it is existent, to a large part due to the fact there is a wonderful farm there.
Agreed. Agree. I don't think anybody is disagreeing that fact, or at all, or arguing that fact at all. I think what we're doing is having, you know, an open discussion in regards to the way...
Sure, and I appreciate that. You know, as far as going 12 months out of the year, God, I don't have that kind of energy.
I mean, I look at it this way, Michael, as best we have this discussion this evening, you know, we had numerous discussions over the noise and the music, and that, you know...
Oh, yeah, we did.
I don't, I don't want, I don't want to repeat of that, I suppose.
None of us do.
And I have to say, you know, we haven't had any complaints, and I know...
No, not a one.
Attorney Schiboni said it was because there's, you know, there's a frustration level there, but I'm hoping that it's not all that, and that it is, the mitigation that you've done has helped a lot up there.
Sure, sure. You know, and again, I've always said, please come and talk to me about any of this stuff, and I have yet to, the only feedback I've gotten was from Kyle Wiggert, who said that everything was wonderful, as far as he was concerned.
Mr. Town Manager, just a question about Location C specifically. It's connected to the rest of that facility. What recourse, I mean, if we were to approve this, is it just good faith that the individuals with alcoholic beverages would be confined to that space? Or what recourse would we, as a board, have, as a licensing board?
They have to be in that space.
They have to be in that defined square footage. They cannot venture outside of, like, that doorway.
You know, they do the maze sometimes.
No, I know, I'm...
They can't walk from the...
I know, because it's on the other side of the greenhouse, but what... I'm just trying to understand if they, if they, if an individual walked out of there. I mean, that's, that's my concern. I really don't have...
Like, any liquor establishment, you can't, you know, any place, you can't walk outside with a drink.
With a drink.
With a drink.
And if it's outdoor, it's...
It's broke off, it's fenced off.
No pun intended, it's corralled in.
Right.
Right. And you can't, like, be able to leave that and go through the maze.
Oh, my God, no, no.
Or if they're outside of the barn, and I'm going to run over, and...
Or even go from one venue to another. You can't go from the tent to the terrace, or the terrace to the barn, with alcoholic beverage.
And they don't. If, if, if anything is to happen with any of these events, they are monitored, and they're staffed for each and every single one. And they're watched to make sure that nothing does get out of control.
And are those employees tip-certified? Because that was one of the recommendations, and I would highly recommend, Michael, that you follow that.
Good, I'll take that advice.
Anybody who's working your venue and watching should all be tip-certified. It's not that...
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I know it's not that hard to do. I'll make sure they all are, at your recommendation. That's a good idea.
For safety's sake.
Yeah.
But what other safeguards can, what, I know we've talked about some conditions, and it's basically the hours, which are, you know, fairly liberal, actually, you know, there's hours left. What else, Michael, can we do to help and protect the neighbors?
Well, Richie, I mean, you talked about, we're not going to be doing, like, the tent comes down around Halloween, so certainly there's going to be nothing that goes on around the tent from then until, the tent goes back up the first of May. So we can eliminate all those months for there, as well as, if there's anything in the barn, it would be Christmas to probably the beginning of May. It's too cold in there, and I'm not intending to add heat there.
And what about the terrace? Is that outside, too?
The terrace is outside, outside. And at, right now, until we get permission to do this addition, there's going to be nothing happening there. And I had hoped to be able to start construction this year, but it's not looking likely. It's more looking like next year.
What's the intention with the construction, or what's the vision?
That greenhouse gets extremely hot in the summertime, and it's totally unusable. And it's to provide more area for retail, because it's never functioned very well in terms of the business model.
Oh, so you'll add retail in there?
Yeah, yeah, because we do retail in the greenhouse now.
That's the area.
And we'll take the greenhouse and move it to Oxford on the farm that I have there, and that could be used as a real greenhouse.
So the greenhouse would become a solid structure?
Right.
With the terrace off to the right?
Yeah.
And then you'll come back looking for inside the...
Is the terrace defined? Is it...
It is.
It is.
It's defined. As part of, when talking to Ralph Sacramone about this, he said that one of the things, and Suzanne was really good about helping with this, she gave me the standards, as far as outside and patio, and it has to be defined.
It has to be sort of roped off and kind of barricaded.
Roped off, in one way or another, anything from hay bales to plants to fences, so, for sure.
I should be able to answer this question myself, but I can't. And that is the question of whether or not this board, the last several years, has ever voted one-day licenses on two venues of the three identified here, on the same day at the same time.
No, I don't believe we have.
I can't remember doing that.
You know, I, that's really the question.
I've never really remembered voting anything outside of the tent.
No, we voted on the barn, for sure.
We voted on a one-day license, but we covered the whole property, we didn't...
No, we don't have one-day, one-day licenses have to be specific to venue as well, so they can't be whole property. None of this, that was, they would have had to been specific to either the tent or the... I just was wondering if you've ever requested, if you can recall, if you've ever requested one-day licenses in two or more of these separate locations at the same time. Is it possible, yes, but honestly, I can't think of any.
Well, and I think that harkens back to what I was speaking of earlier. While that has not gone on, there's obviously a large, you know, there's growth happening, and there's much more interest, because word spreads and what have you. So now, you know, we have to take into account that there could be three events, as well as regular visitors coming to the farm.
Can I ask, I think I know the answer, because Ray pulled it up, but for the zoning districts, this property is owned exactly the same way as the neighborhood around the Country Club, correct? It's hard, they also need the same...
Yes.
The same umbrella district, and so, I mean, for me, it was something that I thought of when I saw this, because I know that it's in a residential neighborhood, as is the Country Club. And I know that members go to the Country Club and often, you know, put their kids by the pool, which can be the same setting where people have been also in the bar area enjoying themselves. I know that's a club, it's not Smolak Farms, but I think that that type of district does have examples of where it can coexist and not create problems. I don't mean people drinking around kids, but I mean responsibly keeping the two separate, and seeing that they serve two different types of populations. I mean, I think that the reason Smolak Farms has gotten the reputation it has is because it's a family-friendly place. I just definitely, from a business perspective, if you had the three events scheduled the same day, along with visitors, I think that actually hurts, I would guess that that hurts your business. I don't know that this is...
Certainly, certainly, I think your point's well taken. I think it would be certainly self-limiting. I mean, I don't think that it's happened already, but this...
Even the Country Club has. I mean, they can have an event in what they call the barn area, they can have an event in the dining room, and people could also be having drinks over by the pool.
Absolutely. Well, that's kind of the point I'm trying to make, is that we...
Well, you made a good point with that. And actually, Rolling Bridge...
And it's literally in the same high, I mean, high...
It's a little bit different.
Quality neighborhood, right?
Well, Rolling Bridge, it's a little bit different, because they don't have a liquor license, but...
Yeah.
They do allow, whether they're supposed to or not, people to bring in their own wine when they're having an event there.
But I, I mean, so my final, final point, just in listening to this, I mean, I think this is, my family comes from closer to Boston, and they come up here all the time, not even to see us, they come here to go to Smolak Farms.
Cider donuts.
And it's encouraging, in a way, for me to see that there's at least this option for diversifying, because I don't, I mean, I know it's... It's been the case, I mean, if you read about nationally, I thought, Mike, we ran into each other and you informed me of this.
Sure.
I mean, you lost your peach crop this year.
Sure.
Because of the environment. I mean, it's a farm that I'd like to see continue to survive, and I know that there are safeguards in place in the event things happen like that. But it was a reminder to me of just how, you know, from one year to the next, how fragile this gem is, and if you can diversify responsibly, and I, there's not a doubt in my mind that we would hold you responsible, and I think that, you know that.
Sure.
Because it precedes my time on the board, but I think this board did a very good job of, frankly, holding you responsible.
I do, too.
And since I've been on this board, I have not received one phone call, email, text, Facebook message, ever saying that you ever did anything incorrectly. And I agree, I think that silence is a sign that, you know, you've adhered to what the expectation has been, which is that you respect your neighbors. And I think it's in your interest that you respect your neighbors and you maintain your farm's reputation. I would bet the marketing does change, but, I mean, I'm, I'm a little bit, I'll be frank, I'm a little concerned. I mean, I'm not saying that I'm 100% on board with this motion, because there's a motion on the table, and I'm a little bit more uncomfortable with C, because I can imagine, just from prior professional experiences, I know that people aren't allowed to leave a premise, but it's very easy to walk outside, to walk with a beverage. And if there is a bridal shower on a Sunday afternoon, or a baby shower on a Sunday afternoon, where they have cocktails, and you have retail right outside the door, it's not really reasonable to expect that guests wouldn't blur that line. I'm just, it's from personal experience, I know that...
Yeah, so those are some of the questions that I would have.
How can I...
How do you safeguard that? Do you hire a police detail? If you've got more than one event going on at the farm at times? Do we condition it that you have to hire a police detail to manage it?
We did, we did with a lot of, when we were having, a lot of this stuff was churning before, we certainly had a police detail there all the time.
Mr. Smolak, may I ask, for the Location C, do you have any idea of how often you've been before this board, seeking a one-day permit for that specific location?
You know, I don't know that we had.
Never.
So, I mean, I know that there is a motion on the table, but however, I, I mean, I've ventured that we, as a board, consider potentially options A and B, and then keeping C, perhaps, as a, as a special license, and then see if that trades as much of a hazard? Because I think that seems to be the hang-up, at least, from my call.
I think we're trying to make it work, but with some sort of condition.
Sure. Well, you know, how about this? Because I, you know, I certainly could easily live with that. Why don't we, why don't we do A?
We were just about to offer...
We were just about to offer that.
Police officer, or we'll take C off the table. We did it in part because of the requirement that you have a separate application for each building. But as Michael said, you can't even recall ever having a venue or an event at that...
No, and that may, area may become more popular after construction. But I don't recall ever.
We would want to reserve the right to come back.
Yes.
And that's your, for any police on there, you can come back and ask.
How many people would sit in that? We're talking the terrace area, correct?
They've got 40 on the list.
Yeah, 40, and I...
It's 20, 35, I think, that's tight.
Yeah, you would absolutely, you would absolutely have to have someone there observing with 40 people.
Oh, we do, we do with every permit that we have.
Corralled in, and, yeah. But I think maybe baby steps is the right approach, if you're willing to take C off the table.
I'm very willing to do that. And then see how it goes, and then come back, because I've always had a good working relationship with the board, and I'd be very happy to do that.
And in all honesty, Michael, how do you feel about managing, if you, if these licenses are to be granted, it gives you the opportunity to be managing two good-sized events in the same day. Is your staff capable of that?
You know, at this point, they're able to, to handle everything that we have so far, but I certainly would make sure...
You haven't, in the past, run two events generally on the same day?
I certainly wouldn't do it if I didn't think we could.
I think, and when we talk about that tip certification, we're not necessarily, this isn't so much an impact on the neighbors. I mean, if you have somebody who goes, and we don't, you don't have your facilities properly staffed, I'm not worried so much about noise, I'm worried about your liability. And the reputation of that property could very easily be shattered with one poor decision. I'm sure you discuss that. And I mean, I'm saying, of course, it's your business, it's your liability, it's your family history.
Sure.
But it is a gem for our community, and I hate to have us make a decision that, I mean, there's not a doubt in my mind that you're taking this very seriously.
Well, I mean, I think you need to be extra careful, because if you, for any reason, lose your license to serve alcohol there, or don't get granted, you've got a wedding schedule, so you need, you have a very high incentive to be careful.
And it's in our interest to run it properly. I mean, because to not run it properly, you'd be kind of cutting our own throat, and we certainly don't want to do that, and we don't want to ruin anybody's wedding.
You're getting this banquet business, it's different.
Banquet.
Yeah, no, you are. If you're going to be running, that's why I question the two events same time, or four events in the same day, two day, two evening, depend, you know, I mean, that's what this opens up. I mean, we have to be honest about it. As I said, let's hash it out tonight, instead of coming back five times, as we have in the past, for other things. So the reality is, you could run four events in one day. You could.
The possibility is absolutely there, but the reality is, we, I mean...
Today, the reality, Michael, let's be honest, today, the reality is, that probably wouldn't happen by the end of the summer, it very well could be.
So how about a condition that you can't have two simultaneous events in two different venues?
I mean, that's the reality.
Could be two in a day, but then not simultaneous.
All right, I'm sorry.
Right, two a day, but not simultaneous, something. I think for me, and to give the neighbors some level of comfort, again, I, I want to see growth, I want, I get it. But your staff's not tested. So diving in does concern me, and I think Selectmen De Collegiaro makes, you know, a very valid point, that one wrong move and a reputation can go very, very quickly, so...
Well, exactly, right.
I mean, you know, it is, that's, I think it's, I don't know, it's a legitimate concern to me, anyway.
So let's talk about conditions, now. So we have, so far, we have, we're taking C off the table, that would be by special permit.
Right.
We're also...
With an opportunity to come back at a later date.
Yeah, and we're also conditioning, yeah, that opportunity always exists, right? And then we're also conditioning it that no simultaneous events would happen at any one of the two locations on any given day.
And I think that can be reviewed. It's just that we have an untested...
You annually approve the license.
Right.
Well, that's what I was going to ask. I believe it's an annual approval, so...
Right, so he'd be back in January anyway.
Just, I know we spent a lot of time on the tips, but the board's baseline position on every group before this board has been tip-certified.
Oh, absolutely.
Although we certainly, the board gives you kudos, and should, and wants to protect your interests. Quite frankly, that has been the board's position unilaterally, in every permit, regardless of vendor or type.
But we also have expected our bartender and waitstaff to be able to view the best of that establishment all the time. We've always said, can you see what's going on? We're expecting them to see, to make sure that people are behaving and not being over-served.
Sure.
So it just seems to me that he can't have 40 guests without somebody there with, but that's off the table, I keep getting myself confused, but I think you get my point.
And again, there is always, none of these things run without somebody in attendance all the time.
They just have...
And I'll make sure they're all tip-certified, there's no question about that, it's a very good idea, very good point.
And again, if there's nobody on site, then it's a poorly-run event, and you don't have events anymore, because we're not going to go to them.
Well, that's true, too.
Capitalism right there. But Don does have a motion on the table, right?
We have a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion. There's another neighbor here. So did you want to speak to this at all?
I mean, I think we're hearing lots of about it, which, you know, this venue today, and specifically for the liquor license, but, I mean, my three-year-old daughter's bedroom is 350 feet from the open tent. I have a sapler up Saturday night above, what's all the noise outside? I have a one girl, I have a child on the way, sitting right there. I don't know what the buffer zone is, that's to the edge of the tent, not to the property lines, that's window to tent. So now, and they were getting, we're getting outside of the tent walls now, the corralled area of alcohol being served. It is designed, we love Smolak Farms, we supported them multiple times, and we supported We supported them multiple times and we've supported every, whichever way we possibly can. Excluding other farms in the area specifically too supportive. It was one of the reasons we moved to the neighborhood and residential area R1, as you've said.
Can I ask you to give you a name, can I just ask you to give you a name for the record? Can you say your name for the record and your address?
Is that part of it still or?
Yeah, usually.
I give my address, but I just don't want to be put on some type of.
Well, we normally do that.
Negative to farms list.
I don't think there's one.
I don't think there's a negative.
Other people have been able to have been discouraged to speak out at the best of, I know if you come across as anti-farm and I better watch out, not by any smaller.
In fairness, it's on tape, it's just for the minutes. It's just for the record.
It is required, I mean, actually.
Francis, Francis, seven, seven, six, Dale Street.
All right, thank you, Francis. It's nothing bad, it's just, you know, to recognize, we do need to know your name and then you're, you know.
Understood, understood. So I'm just kind of, just a little disheartened, this was two years ago, I was just looking a lot about two and a half, chasing the first move here. I was made aware of the noise ordinance and jumped in to some of my other neighbors and the butters in the community to jump in on that concern because we, I understand and I want to support the farm, but it definitely six months of the year cannot have any of my windows open Friday, Saturday. Can't be outside because you wouldn't be able to conversation. But, be that it's meant, it's okay when you're around that, I still love the farm, I'd rather be there than not if this is what it's going to take to support them. But I'm just wondering where the line gets from. Where is, and then if this, if the residential zone, which explicitly states these things are not allowed, does this mean I can open my own alcohol serving business if I, if my own business takes a dip one year, can I substitute my income by opening up an alcohol serving in my, and how that precedent has been set or?
Well, I mean, it is a business, it's an ongoing concern.
It's a farm, it's a farm capacity, we've got a facility.
But what interesting is what you're saying, excuse me, what interesting is what you're saying is that the noise is still there. We haven't, so this is news, this is information that we haven't heard.
That's all the most I've been in, in other areas in the farm, but definitely they have had provisions made, you know, but I don't know if they were testing decibels, if it would be clearly allowable in one particular, but that's, I have not, but I have a product to tell you.
Just to put everybody's fears at rest, before we opened, we brought the sound people out to make sure that it was done in total compliance to what we had agreed to do in the past. The curtains are up as they should be, the sound is calibrated the same way it should be, right to the letter is exactly what the agreement was.
Did you have a rebuttal on that? And they did, but Mr. Smallak is correct in that, but if I did witness where the sound monitor device was placed on the property, I don't know if that's a hurricane, but I could see it from my property, it was buried in the woods up against the plywood, into the berry patches where there was no residential area. My house is a hundred, two hundred feet closer than where that sound monitor was placed. If you'd like, we could put it right on the edge of my daughter's bedroom window and use it for the decibels to see where it's on a Friday, Saturday. I'd be more than happy to invite anyone included, Mr. Smallak, on the global side issue to come out, to supper at that place, sit out on that back there for a typical Friday, Saturday, and your own ears if you would, do you mean?
Where's the building inspector's letters?
But again, I don't want to get into the noise forms, I feel like I would get wasted on this.
You're not, and it is, for me, it's a, it's a, it's a good point, but I do feel like more often than not, we have Debbie Ingles or somebody from Smolak Farm here asking for a temporary one day license. And again, for the past year and a half, no one's ever come and said, it's been a problem. And I mean, so I understand there's the concern because right now we're considering giving them a permanent license, but there have been opportunities every, almost every single week, every other week, excuse me, every other meeting, to voice this concern, which I'd like to know because I wasn't on the board when the noise study was done. But again, I've never received any type of complaint, otherwise respectfully, I appreciate.
We haven't in the last year.
I haven't had any, I've voiced it as often, like I said, a little defeated after the previous round and some dialogue and other neighbors, you know, kind of discouraging to, and again, not, not Mr. Smolak, I don't believe any associates of his, I mean, still fairly moving, but not for them.
So where are we?
Thank you. I think Mr. Shavoni had something he wanted to express again.
I, and I ask you to read the zoning ordinance, please. All other buildings and uses are expressly prohibited without a special permit. If you read the R1 zone, it provides for agricultural, provides for the number of animals and everything else, so your zoning ordinance foresaw this farm there. It's much different than a country club that had to get a special permit and had to get awkward bariums and everything. You can't compare a country club and what they do with the social club with a farm. He has to come for day licenses. Do you advertise a day licenses ten days in advance and post to everyone? No, that's why people don't come. People don't want to cause trouble in the town, they don't want to cause trouble with Mr. Smolak. You are giving, you are allowing a full time liquor license, a full purpose at two sites. And he said, well, it wouldn't be later than December. That's a drinking establishment and an eating establishment and they're not allowed in an R1 zone. So this gentleman's right, why can't he apply to have one in his garage? Well, that's absurd. Well, what's absurd is it's in the zone. Mr. Smolak should go for a special permit before he comes before you for a full purpose liquor license. And it's the zoning ordinance that will give him restrictions and they'll be recorded at the registry of deeds and if he abides by those and then he comes back to you, it's a different story. But if you give it first, you're violating the zoning ordinance.
Licenses don't violate ordinances, I don't believe licenses violate ordinances. Whether I agree with you or not, let me finish, and I appreciate it. The issuance of a license in and of itself is not, cannot be in conflict with the zoning ordinance. Operation can and you can, without getting into the argument of whether you think it's zoning or not, the licensing authority can issue a license that in and of itself does not conflict with the zoning ordinance. The operation may, that's up to.
You're allowing the operation, so.
No, you're issuing a license.
You become a member, how does someone appeal something like that? They have to go and appeal that it's de facto a breach of the zoning ordinance. You're creating, you're creating in the barn a restaurant. If he wants to serve meals there, seven days a week, six days a week or five, you can't serve it once you give that full purpose license. You're expanding something from an agricultural use, an accessory use, I would say, because everybody is going, okay, we'll allow it, we won't go to the state and take appeals because he'll stay in business and it's better for the community, and it is. But once you, once you afford an eating establishment, there's nothing to prevent them from putting in the paper their menu and saying it's open, nothing.
Respectfully, I mean, Treadwell's operated there for a number of years. We ate, I mean, my family ate there God knows how many times just because it was ice cream and not dinner. I mean, we still spend hours there, truly hours there, eating outside anyway. So I'm not, I guess we've already entered a gray area then. I mean, that's, I mean, I just don't understand that distinction, whether it's already technically been. I mean, I haven't even come into this consensus yet.
Not to argue with you, sir, and I understand what you're saying, but now we're telling us, Don was saying, you can sit there and drink beer and dance and do it three hundred and sixty-five days a year.
Sorry about that.
But Mr. Shavoni, the point you just made about the restaurant, you know, people are going to be there eating three hundred and sixty-five days a year, it already approaches that. I mean, again, people go there to eat, and this is, I mean, are we talking about the crowds or I'd say, let's focus on the very fact that there are people consuming alcohol, I would say, as opposed to there being crowds because we all know that crowds go to Smolak Farms. We all know that they have to get police details, there are times of the year where you can't drive down Dale Street, so it's not really fair, I feel, to look at it that way. I absolutely take your concern as far as liquor goes, but I'd like to know more about whether, I mean, if it wasn't liquor, if it was just the fact that he was having events that late at night, is that the problem?
No, it's, you're creating, what you're creating is you're violating the zoning ordinance or assisting him in violating. It says, no eating and drinking establishments in any residential zone except R6 with a special permit.
He already, he already has been, he's already eating there. I mean, this is, this is something that's been since I was a child.
So be it, I don't want to argue with it, I don't want to get anybody more cantankerous than that now.
No, but you brought up the points tonight.
However you do, you have the authority and the, but you leave people in a higher space. And when there were thirteen a year and then nineteen and now more, there has been growth. And the growth opposes your zoning ordinance, in my opinion, in my opinion.
So can I, can I ask you a, can I ask one more question?
Can I get an opportunity to speak?
Can I ask one more question then of Mr. Shavoni to respond? Why is thirteen okay, nineteen eh, twenty? I mean, you're, just by your discussion, you're creating these gray zones yourself and how you're approaching it. I mean, you seem to be okay with thirteen, but nineteen may be too skittish.
If Mr. Birmingham's daughter has to hear, and my client's children, because we're closer, if they have to hear music thirteen times a year or have events, it's one thing, but when they're four, five days a week and they're going to be five months a year.
Four and five days a week.
You've got to take a step back and that's what you're giving.
Right now, once in a while, a weekday.
You're not just creating a place to have dinner and gather, you're not creating that. What you're creating is.
I know it's already a place, it's already a place to gather though, that's the issue is it's already.
I'm not going to argue with you, that's illegal, I, in my opinion, it's, in my opinion, it's a breach of the zoning ordinance. And I think he needs a special permit first and I think you ought to get town council opinion before you do it. That's just my opinion.
Okay, we appreciate that and we'll consider that. And you had a comment.
I just wanted to respond to the mixing of all different laws and complete misinformation that I just heard. This is not a zoning issue. I wasn't going to raise this issue about zoning because this is not your jurisdiction. I mentioned earlier, as you know, you have the ability, if you issue a liquor license to put conditions on it, and we already talked about some conditions. The comment about four or five days a week, I don't know where that came from, we're talking about weekends, that's all we've been talking about, is having, having venues on weekends and the point came up about having.
But what is the license request for though? Is it not, it's not just for Friday, Saturday and Sunday, it's for every day, isn't it? Am I right with that?
It's correct because that's.
So would you, is that something we'd be willing to talk about, is to have it only for Friday, Saturday and Sunday?
Well, on occasion.
And then add special permit for, come in for a special license for other days.
Well, and just to step back for a second, when I was asked about this, to come and do this, and I'm more than happy to do this, I'm more than happy to cooperate, but on occasion, we do have a weekday event.
Right.
It happens.
Thursday, night.
Wednesday nights, we have our WIM dinner series, we've had ten of them this year. It happens and so I was told to apply for basically most, I don't remember who told me this, but whatever, whatever the potential are, just so that we don't have to come back and pepper you with one day licenses.
So he's applying for more than what he thinks he may need.
Way more.
So, Michael.
We don't mind the license request. You know, we see it, we get to see you.
The main point I wanted to make though was just confusion about zoning. This property is in an R1 district, but it is an agricultural use. And there is a letter that, I was just asking, Michael, if it had been submitted to you, apparently it was, a letter from the building commissioner explaining, and I won't get into the details of it, but basically agriculture is protected under the state zoning act and most local bylaws and it's preempted, so local bylaws cannot change that. I used to be North Andover Town Council, but I don't recall specifically opining on this for you guys, maybe some of the towns around here. It's agriculture, it's protected and this particular use is called agritourism. So, it's the exact opposite of what the butters attorney was saying. No special permits, no zoning governance at all really, if it's an agricultural use. It happens, I do a lot of conservation law, it's the same thing with white lands, there is an exemption in the State Wilderness Protection Act for agriculture. The litigation usually comes up when it's unclear whether it's really agriculture, as long as you can prove the details of the definition, whether it's under the state zoning act, chapter forty-eight, section three, or the state zoning definition under chapter one twenty-eight, section one A. This property is agriculture, so it can do these activities without require, and again, this is, you're not the zoning board of appeals, but I'm just saying there was a, I don't know if that was an intended effort to confuse, but this property doesn't need to go back to the zoning board of appeals to get some approval before it comes before you for the liquor license and.
May I ask, Michael, would you, so Mr. Birmingham brought up and the concern about the times that you would be open during the week and you said this is really to target the weekends and that during the week you just want the flexibility, would you be willing to scale back instead of nine PM on weekdays? Would you consider eight PM?
Well, or, or, or again, if, if, I think, I think that's fine, you know, we, we came in like a couple of weeks ago with a couple of instances that were exceptions. And if we're allowed to do the same thing, if there is some, something like that, that's, that's fine. I just, the whole thing was not to overburden you with coming in and giving you lots of things to deal with all the time.
Well, we started to amend the application, so.
We had two amendments that were kind of discussed and not official amendments at this point. We talked about no simultaneous events in any of the venues and taking the license for the farm stand area off the table. So we would be just talking about the tent area and the barn area, which the barn is further, I believe, further from the residential areas. And then I kind of threw out about excluding the weekdays and using, having it Friday, Saturday and Sunday instead of seven days a week. And then the other days would be, since they're limited on the other days, it would be by, still by special permit.
That would be by special application.
By special application, that way.
Are you amenable to that? Or do you want to discuss it with your attorney?
Well, probably not a bad idea, but also too, we do have our WIM dinner series, which are Wednesday nights and they run until nine o'clock, so that's.
And you usually come in one, with the entire schedule, one night, we get, we go through it.
Yeah, but is this covered by my, is this covered by, would this be covered by my license, my alcohol?
If we were to, if we were to do Friday, Saturday, Sunday, it wouldn't be, we'd have to do something, either waiving it or have you come in for a special permit. I think I would prefer to see the schedule and come in, it gives you a little bit of advertisement too, on the WIM series, right?
Sometimes publicity is not good, let me tell you. We had that experience a couple of years ago, but, well, I think we certainly can agree to the fact that no simultaneous events with, without, without a permit, I would think.
So what you're asking is, okay, so no simultaneous events.
Right.
But if one were to come up, you would ask to come back and apply for that?
Sure.
Is that what you're, is that what you're saying?
Sure. And you know, honestly, if there's anything, if there were to be anything simultaneous, I cannot imagine that the size of it, we're not going to have like two events with two hundred people, there just doesn't, we're limited by, you know, just scale of size too. We couldn't have anything that big or, or big events, two big events at the same time. We just don't have the facilities for it.
I'd still like to see, you know, it only be valid for the weekends and then come back for special permits for the.
So come back for.
The WIM series.
Monday through, through Thursday events.
Monday through Thursday.
So you're saying weekends you are, you're calling it Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
Right.
So then you would come back for weekday events, are you, are you agree with?
It would be nice not to have to come in with all the WIM ones too, I mean, for a couple of reasons.
But it's one night, it's one night.
No, so what, what the chairman is saying, so you just come in with your list of the WIM ones?
Yeah, that's what we do normally. You just come in with one night and we go through them all in one night.
Yeah, I've got all the dates, I mean, that, we're, we're working on the one days right now.
Could we give you the dates of those and include them in this license so that he doesn't have to?
You have all the dates right now, do you?
Sure.
Yeah, we could do that.
I mean, especially, especially though, because those move anyways, I mean, just, just so you know, I mean, truth, this, this actually has to be fair, you've probably spent more time discussing this license than you have cumulatively the entire past year's worth of licenses. So, I mean, I don't, I just want to be clear, I don't know what the burden is like on the backend. I would hardly call this burden, so I'm just reviewing your licenses regularly anyways. And I feel like it, what's been proposed tonight is quite a bit of paring back of what the initial proposal was.
Okay, did you want to amend your?
I'll have to be honest with you, I just have one more comment. You're going to have it Friday, Saturday and Sunday, right?
Yeah, the, the weekends and then.
So by our rights, it should be prorated, shouldn't be charged a full liquor license from using three days a week. Because you're just going to have to pay for one day in between.
Well, we're trying to get it so that you can include the WIM ones on this one.
Yeah, I'd be happy with that.
You'd be happy with that?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have it written down, do you want me to amend?
Well, I have, I don't have the WIM dates, but I have.
Make a new, make a new motion.
So, well, we have a motion in a second.
So it would be a friendly amendment to add the WIM dates.
And the other two conditions, which were taking, so the amendment does not include the farm stand and it's no simultaneous events.
I have a quick question though, you're adding this outside area of the tent.
Well, it's, that's all done at this point in time anyway, I mean, the area around the tent is, is the area around the tent.
I understand, but that's not where your liquor license is, your days have been for in the past, it's only been for the tent, right?
Well, the tent area is what I always called it or thought it was.
Wasn't that?
Is that?
The bar service, the bar service is under the tent.
Right.
Right.
That's my point.
But it's a tent area of fenced off. Is it fenced off?
That has no noise control, so what kind of music's out there now?
None.
So are we flipping open the tent so the music can be heard in this probably kind of a new cocktail area? This is a change.
No, no, it's not, it's no different than what we're doing now. There would be no change. It's not, it's not, we're flipping it, we're not flipping it, first of all, the tents don't have any sides on it, so no.
Right, you know what I'm saying.
But if somebody's, it, they sit, they're in and around the tent area and originally when I, when I did the first thing, I did.
That's not what your licenses have been for in the past.
It's been for the tent.
For the tent.
It's been for the tent only.
And that's where, that is where the liquor service is, is the tent and that's where.
That's not, no, Michael.
But they shouldn't, but people shouldn't be venturing outside the tent.
If they're venturing outside the tent now with liquor into this area, you've violated licenses.
Okay.
What you're saying is, is a few places for people to sit right outside the tent, is that what you're saying?
Right. Mm-hmm. Sure.
But the reason why the residents, they'll come to us, it's not because the sound of liquor is what's, it's when people drink, they then become louder. And so it defeats the purpose if they are coming outside of the tent. It does explain perhaps then why, why neighbors have actually then apparently been hearing an increase in noise.
I think they, they talked about music. That's, I might be wrong.
Oh, is it, is it the music, or what is it?
Every two minutes.
I expect that, I expect that to happen, but I think that's...
I mean, I know it's been an hour, but I just, I guess I'm struggling with why we're doing this. The one-day licenses are not an impediment to us, Michael. Any implication made that it's on our administrative side, we don't like it, it's complicated, that is, I'm telling you today, if you're hearing that from staff, come and see me. We are not burdened, or complicated, or otherwise put out because you go for one-day licenses. It doesn't mean it may not be in your interest. I'm saying I want to eliminate here and forever that it's on us that you're applying for a full liquor license. It doesn't sound like a cost item, because short of Mr. Stewart's suggestion, which has some meaning to it. Well, let me finish. If you went for a full one, there would be three separate licenses at three thousand dollars apiece, I think. What's the cost?
Two hundred apiece.
No, 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 not, not an annual license, isn't. Nope. That's not our annual license fee.
It's up two thousand?
Isn't it? No, you're, you're ten, it's three thousand. So at three licenses, it's nine thousand. So you're not benefiting financially by going for, I guess, after all the conversation, it raises a question of why the somewhat not perfect process that we've been following without a lot of feedback couldn't continue, in its not-so-perfect way, without all of this. Because the conditions sound, I don't even know how to...
Well, I mean, I think the conditions are fairly simple. But I think, but yeah, I mean, they're going to be restrictive, and it's going to be costly.
My problem right now is... Tom Manager just introduced a key piece of information, that my guess is, you guys did not know that you were going to have to pay nine thousand dollars for this.
Well, three will be two.
Well, okay, so my, my guess, though, is, it sounds like you came into this expecting that it was going to be a fraction of that price, and so...
Exactly.
I would imagine this might change the calculus.
I think we need to think about this a little bit. Friendly amendment to table.
Table the...
Right. And I want a little more information on the eighty-by-eighty surrounding area now, and that, that...
Yeah. I mean, our expectation is that that license contained within the tent.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Either way, it sounds like that's, this is, I was talking about twenty-five dollars, we're talking about several thousand dollars in differences, so...
Okay. So, so at this point, do we want to have the...
We should have taken the VFW out of it.
Yeah, well, if, if, if I might...
Withdraw your...
If I might, could we, could, could I continue this, and then let me do a little more research with the A B C C table?
Well, we have a motion. Do you want to withdraw a motion?
No action. We'll move the table.
You have to withdraw the second as well.
Yeah.
I don't know who withdraws the second, but...
I will second that we table it.
Okay, so the motion's been withdrawn, it's been seconded, and we've got a motion to table it. We have a second on that. All those in favor?
Aye.
No.
Yeah, I did it, and then I... Is there a specific contention for date to return to the licensing authority?
No.
Is there a specific date in which you're intended to return to the licensing authority? Just because there are folks in the room, it was on me relative to the notes last time on the cancellation. I want to make sure we're communicating properly with the folks that are here. So do you know if you'd be ready by the next meeting, which is two weeks from now, or is it more likely to be the July meeting, which is about five or six weeks from now?
I would say it would be two weeks, two weeks, two weeks. Yeah, we should be able to be ready in two weeks. Sure.
So the board has continued this to the next meeting, two weeks from now.
So you're going to go research the costs and everything?
Then we'll add that to the agenda.
Okay, good.
And we would certainly give you notice if we didn't think we were going to be ready, so that you could take it off the agenda, so that the Butters and others would all know.
So a friendly suggestion to the folks who are interested in this, if it's not on the agenda, I'm not, they're not going to be individual calls. If it's not on the agenda, it's not happening. If it's on the agenda, at least we're going to make the assumption someone's showing up to talk about it.
Okay, good, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Just wanted to make sure you're eliminating.
Okay, let's move on. Let's take, we have someone here for the Bertucci's. Do we have anybody here for Bertucci's? Okay. Come on up, let's get through this.
I apologize for being a little underdressed.
Came right, right here from vacation, so...
Okay, so we've got a, the next is a request...
Werewolf?
Chewbacca.
Mr. Smolak, we're still under session here. Can you, guys, take it outside. Okay, so we're on the agenda for a request to change management at Bertucci's.
You want to jump on? Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay.
Move that the Board of Selectmen acting as licensing commissioners approve the change of manager for Bertucci's Brick oven ristorante from Nicholas J. Joseph to Arguski Gukasayan. I'm sorry.
Dad, you did it much better than most, so I'm impressed.
All right.
And because you jumped on the motion, I was going to let you struggle with that.
I know.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I think, I don't think all the paperwork is in order. We have positive recommendations from both police and fire, I believe. So all those in favor?
Aye.
You're all set. You said it for a long time.
Thank you very much.
I do want to come back, so make sure you handle it.
Okay.
Yeah.
The next is another one that's relatively an easy one. Requests from the VFW post twenty-one oh four for two one-day wine and malt licenses for the...
Then there was one.
It'll be on the...
Trying to wear them down.
Both the third and the fourth of July, from twelve to ten on the third, and from nine A. M. to ten P. M. on the fourth of July. These guys always do a fantastic job controlling the facility. Do I have a motion? Oh.
We got to hit seven inside a tent, right?
It's out of fence. There's an orange fence there, double, double.
We know.
Second. It was good, Don.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I have a question. What night are fireworks?
I believe they're the third, but I...
They're almost always the third.
The third?
Yeah.
Rain day, we do have a rain day, and I forget what it is, the night.
The night. So they're the third, which is great, because you're open from twelve to ten. You can see the fireworks from the common.
Well, there's that one down the street.
There is that one tree.
We can take care, we can take care of that with another motion.
Ray, give Ray a couple of days, he can do anything.
Come on, Ray, get on it.
So, Ray, is there any history with the tree day?
You know what, I was only kidding. The common is beautiful, and there's absolutely no trees coming down.
No.
On purpose.
The festival committee decided to start at noon on the third this year, so we're going to, we're going to do our best to be open that early. Just depends on our logistics and the volunteers we have, but we're going to try and get open as early as possible. Same, same routine as the past year, is our bartenders will be serving. All of our staff are all TIP certified. All of our VFW members and, and club friends are all TIP certified, so we'll do our best.
Anticipate no issues. Just a good time.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Phil.
Thanks, Phil.
On the third.
See you then.
Do you have a motion to move out of licenses?
Uh-huh.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chairman, I would usually yield the balance of my time, but we have two important items that I will promise to be less than three minutes on. The first is the updated Merrimack College project. The board has talked to the legislative delegation, it could have been nearly three years ago, but at least it was two years ago, about this. We are at critical mass relative to that project. We saw, we are close or at the point in which the college, the state, and the town have agreed to a scope of services. We should just be able to begin some of that work as early as late summer, early fall, the pedestrian part of it.
Wow, great.
I'll have more specific details once we go one more meeting. But in essence, it'll be a sidewalk on the Merrimack side along the college. There'll be a sidewalk on the, what I'll call the town side, between Berkshire and five-ten, Turnpike, Berkeley, sorry, Berkeley and five-ten, Turnpike, and then there'll be a pedestrian crossing somewhere in that process. There'll also be a fence and decorative lighting on the school.
Mr. Town Manager, can I ask, so Berkeley, is, so we're going to extend it from Berkeley up to the Fuddruckers area?
A little short of that, yes.
So then, though, we still continue to have a gap from Berkeley all the way around to the Wilson Rock Road Hylon area then, too, correct?
You would be able to connect into the internal streets there, but not, not, right, you couldn't go to the corner. There's too much, there's property questions, who owns what property, where the poles are. So at this point, there was a broader state project that could be years off, that talks about expanding the entire roadway. But for now, the only thing within the dollars allowed, and the ability to pull it off in a reasonable period, is...
So the expectation is that pedestrians just would, when they hit Berkeley, they would walk through the back, and then...
They would if they were cutting, right. They could come off of one-twenty-five and through the neighborhood and pick up Berkeley and come up north in that direction. So it'll be connected to the sort of interior pedestrian sidewalk on the street, and not go all the way to the Elm Street corner.
Okay.
Of what is one-twenty-five.
So will we get a, because it seemed like that was a moving design? And I know that we met with the delegation last June, last July, and it seemed like it was an evolving project.
I would say that what, you know, there was, there was something in the package that would have defined the pathway. I would say that that represents, you know, ninety-five, ninety-six percent. It's just a function of literal beginning and end. So what you see there on the, on the graphical depiction is, for all intents and purposes, what you're going to see. A pedestrian cross.
And the phase one, that red line, is that, that's an overpass, that's a...
There is no overpass.
That's a, a walk, that's the walkway that they had agreed to.
There'll be a pedestrian signal across one-four, uh, one-fourteen, connecting, we'll have to look at the map in your package, it's hard for me to...
You know where the, the side entrance is into Merrimack College off of, that's where they said, right around, right here.
It's in from Walsh, that's called Walsh. It's in from that. It's closer to the, there's sort of a natural opening that comes out of Royal Crest that cars don't come out of.
Yeah.
Next time you're down that area, the pedestrian crossing will be in that area. The sidewalk actually will be inside the stone wall at Merrimack. And the answer is, the reason it's inside is that inside stone wall is actually still state highway. So the state highway extends beyond the rock wall, as most roads have increased over time, and building it inside the rock wall is a heck of a lot easier than building it on the shoulder of the road, as it relates to certain stuff.
The kids use it, though. Aren't they, they'll still use it?
Well, they're going to, they're going to fence between the campus and the sidewalk. So you'll, if you're coming from the campus, you're going to be forced to find an entrance onto the sidewalks.
Yes, and keep them inside.
It'll travel them in both directions, so they're not walking just anywhere across.
That's good.
So the sidewalk and the decorative fencing that goes with it will direct pedestrians...
Decorative fencing, not the, just throw up chain link?
No, it's not, it's not like thirteen. Will, will direct pedestrians to an area where the crossing is, and logically bring people in that area. That's why we wanted sidewalk on both sides as well. So if you were to cross somewhere other than the pedestrian crossing on the Royal Crest side, you would now be steering after you cross the street at a fence, and you can't, you know, again, a decorative fence. So it's going to force you to want to cross at that crosswalk. Well, it's going to be, they have a sort of nice black rod iron throughout the campus, pretty common. Yeah, they're spending nearly six figures on a fence, and close to a half a million on decorative lighting that'll create a sort of curb appeal or a gateway into...
None of that is the million dollars that they're actually contributing to the sidewalks.
No, that's all part of that. The two million dollars of the sidewalks, fencing, some decorative lacing, the pedestrian crossing.
Okay. So what's, repeat the total cost of the project?
Two million dollars.
All right, do you have pictures for us?
One picture.
So real quick, facilities master plan, we're in a busy time in that we have projects four, five, and six going on at the same time. Project four is the town hall expansion renovation. It's going, proceeding as scheduled. The steel went up last week for the atrium closing. The insides all been studded. You see...
They were working the weekend.
Saturday only.
Okay.
No Sundays, only Saturdays.
No, I was happy to say.
It's like having the hot...
Yeah, trust me.
Now...
Just Saturdays.
The tree's coming down on Saturday.
A lot of brick work is being done that you can see from the exterior. Just skipping real quickly to project six, which is the classroom expansion. This week, the, the request for qualifications for an architect to do the feasibility is, is going out. Project five is the public works project. We are at the end of schematic design. We are before all the land use boards tomorrow night, January, June seventh, and then Tuesday, June twenty-first, I'm before the planning board. Wednesday night, June eighth, and Wednesday, June twenty-third, I'm before conservation. On June twenty-eighth, I go before the ZBA. One of the key factors of the property is that there are wetlands that intersect the property on both left and right sides. So we're quite limited in terms of variances and fifty-foot no bills, et cetera. So all three projects. But I'm going to go here so the camera can catch us. So this is...
Oh, I can't wait.
This is the addition of the public work facility. What you see in the back here is the existing building, where the front face facing of the existing building will also all be redone.
That is great.
But this is the new structure that will be going on the front with the public entrance here, and there will be a connection between two...
I love it.
So to understand that from the public's perspective, we're adding a two-story addition to the front of the building facing Osgood.
Seventy-one hundred square.
And then reskinning the space behind it to match the, the exterior finishes of